It's nine oh six. About time to start a meeting. If we could get everybody to find a chair and come to order. It's good to see everyone here today. Man, quite a crowd we have. It's time to start with our invocation. So let me come to the front and we'll get this started. Tommy Richardson, Emmanuel Baptist will be our one of the lead's invocation this morning.
Good morning. Grab that mic. All right.
Would you pray with me, please? Lord, we come to you today realizing just how good you are to us. Lord, you've blessed us in so many different ways. Our city's growing. Lord, I know that creates more stress and more strain on the infrastructure. I know it creates more stress and strain on our leadership. I pray that today, that you would bless them, that Father, that they, in their decisions and their discussions, would bless you. And that, Father, that this would be a place where we know that we honor you in everything that we do and everything that we say. Father, we lift up this day to you as these blessed ones, ones that you call ministers. Lord, I pray that they would do things that are good for people, but most of all, good for you. Lord, pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
And thank you, Lord, for the reins that you send and for the reins that you will send. And help me with the pledge this morning, Maria Franco. Please come forward.
Good morning. In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you.
We do have three proclamations this morning. The first one will be International Education Week. Sharon Tomlin, are you here, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm in the front row.
It's where we wanted you.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
This is a long one, so bear with me a minute while we read this and then she can make a speech and then we'll take pictures. It says, "Whereas International Education Week is a joint initiative, the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of State celebrate the importance and benefits of international education in the United States and around the world. And as President Obama has stated, all of us share this world but for a brief moment in time. The question is whether we spend that time focused on what pushes us apart or whether we commit ourselves to an effort, a sustained effort, to find common ground, to focus on the future we seek for our children and to respect the dignity of all human beings. And we are reminded that the challenges we face today are increasingly borderless: climate change, the environment, the economy, of some of the issues that affect our daily lives and demand our attention on a global scale. And finding sustainable solutions is imperative and require an unprecedented level of international cooperation and a complete education in the 21st century must teach our children about their interdependent world, and it must prepare them to be good leaders and good global citizens. And international awareness and knowledge can help our children build the skills needed to communicate and cooperate with those from other nations and other cultures. And as they participate in international education and international exchange, our students can gain the knowledge and experiences to help them contribute to a sustainable future in all. Now therefore, I, Duane Morrison, the mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of November 18, 2013 as International Education Week 2013. Striving for international education, learning matters around the world as a chance to embrace the uniqueness of nations around the world as well as our similarities, to better understand how to work together and strongly urge everyone to join the Angelo State University International Studies Program in celebrating international education and international exchange." Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. That was rather long, I realize. I do want to thank the city of San Angelo for their continuing support of international education at Angelo State University. It is a very important thing for us to be able to promote diversity on our campus. It brings a great education that is far beyond words for our students. You may or may not know, but in the last reporting period, which included the semester through fall of 2012, it was reported that our 95 international students contributed approximately $2.1 million to our local economy here in San Angelo. And with that number more than doubled for this coming year, we expect that the impact will as well double for the city of San Angelo. So our students do bring a lot to not just ASU, but to San Angelo, the community, and to the state. Thank you very much.
We now have the Children's Grief Awareness Day. This will be accepted by the Hospice of San Angelo, Melissa Vines. Good morning. And this also is a longer one, so I've got a cheat sheet here. Sheet's up the font just a little bit. It says, "Whereas many children 15 years of age or younger will suffer the loss of one or both parents, an immediate family member or a close friend and loved one, and the majority of children and teens grieving a loved one feel alone, misunderstood, fearful, causing an inability to manage or even face their grief. And many adults and other children are erroneous to believe that grieving children and teens are resilient enough to get over their grief, which is why children and teens are often called forgotten mourners. And the unresolved grief of children and teens who experience the death of a parent and immediate family member, close friend, may lead to depression, hopelessness, and other mental health issues including anxiety disorders and substance abuse later in life. And grief centers such as Hospice of San Angelo Building Bridges Program provide peer support to children and teens who have experienced the death of a parent, primary caregiver, sibling, family member, neighbor, friend, and offer comfort and guidance to young people and their families in their time of grief and educate the community, including schools and businesses, on the profound effects that type of personal loss has on children and teens. And National Children's Grief Awareness Day is observed every year on the 3rd Thursday in November to recognize and support grieving children and teens throughout the country during a part of the year when those mourning the loss of a loved one often feel alone, apart from their peers. And whereas the permanent establishment of Children's Grief Awareness Day on the Thursday before the Thanksgiving holiday will raise public awareness about childhood bereavement and give the citizens of our fair community the opportunity to express their support for the thousands of children and teens living in San Angelo who have suffered the loss of a loved one by participating in recognized support efforts and wearing blue and recognize the efforts of local grief centers such as Hospice of San Angelo's Building Bridges Program for the work on behalf of grieving children and teens. Now therefore, I, Duane Morrison, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim and permanently designate the 3rd Thursday in November of each year as Children's Grief Awareness Day. In San Angelo, in order to raise public awareness about childhood bereavement and give the citizens of our community the opportunity to express their support for the children and teens living in San Angelo who have suffered the loss of a loved one by participating in recognized support events and wearing blue and recognize the efforts of local grief centers such as Hospice of San Angelo's Building Bridges Program for their work on behalf of grieving children and teens."
I would just like to thank the city council and Mayor Morrison for recognizing Children's Grief Awareness Day and the importance that it holds for grieving children throughout our community, and also the importance that it has to programs like Building Bridges that offer support and encouragement to those children and their families. Thank you so much.
And we have one more proclamation. David McBride, if you would, please come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me read this one. And again, this one's a little long, so bear with me. It says, "Whereas every year, more than 1.58 million Americans living with life-limited illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care offers the highest quality of cares to patients and families and bring comfort, love, and respect to all they serve, hospice allows people to spend their final months surrounded by family and loved ones at home, wherever home may be. And whereas hospice and palliative care professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clergy, providing comprehensive and compassionate care that make the wishes of each patient and family a priority, there are more than 468,000 trained volunteers that contribute 21 million hours of service to hospice programs annually. Whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training, and assistance and emotional and spiritual support, patients are able to live as fully as possible through the journey at life's end. And the commitment of more than 1,600 hospice providers, of which Hospice of San Angelo is one, the national hospice and palliative care organizations and the Department of Veteran Affairs have allowed the Initiative Program, "We Honor Veterans," to thrive and to ensure that veterans find the compassion, care, and dignity that they deserve at the end of life. And whereas the provision of quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with utmost respect and care. Now therefore, I, Duane Morrison, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim and permanently designate the month of November of each year as Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals." Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff and the hundreds of volunteers of Hospice of San Angelo, but more importantly, on behalf of the patients that we serve. Back in 1985, we took our first patient, admitted our first patient, and we made him three promises. We told him, "We will control your pain, we will walk with you on your journey, and we will put you in control of your treatment." We've made that same promise almost 10,000 times. We could not have done that without the generosity and the prayers and the love of the city of San Angelo and the Concho Valley, and for that, we're very grateful. Thank you.
And my family has been the recipient of hospice care, as probably many others of you have, and it's a wonderful organization to have. We have one more here, and this is a recognition. Jamie Rainey and Michael, boy, y'all come forward, please. And I didn't know this was on here until I read the agenda, but look like I'm gonna get something.
Had to slip the mayor $20, but we got the agenda going. Let me regress a little bit. A little over six years ago, Howard College came up with a $25 million master plan. As you know, they've been here many, many years. We educate about 3,200 students. And about three months ago, we finally broke ground on the first $12 million two educational building. So if you're out on 277, I ask you to go by and look, excuse me, you'll see our two buildings being constructed, the curb and gutters are being poured. But with the mayor's leadership, with Tech Dot's help, we finally see this come to fruition. So the first phase will be finished about a year from now. And on behalf of that, we want to thank the mayor for being on our board for nine years. So if you would, let me read this resolution. Dated June 19th, excuse me, 2013, whereas Duane Morrison served as an ex-officio member of the Howard College San Angelo Foundation from March 2004 until March 2013, dedicating his time, knowledge, and energy to the betterment of the Howard College San Angelo campus. And whereas Duane Morrison carefully considered each foundation decision, shared thoughtful insight, and demonstrated outstanding leadership based on moral and ethical principles. And whereas Duane Morrison served the foundation through his sincere interest, wisdom, and deliberate actions in regard to the welfare of the students, the college, and the community, be it therefore resolved that the Howard College San Angelo Foundation wishes to express our sincere appreciation to Duane Morrison for nine years of outstanding service. Thank you, sir.
You're very kind, and I appreciate it very, very much. I have enjoyed my board member, Shemold Howard College, and I really think that that's probably one of the greatest assets that we have in San Angelo, Texas, because these people are going to school out there, not children. They are, they're grown people, and they have families, and they've realized that they need something else. And Howard College has always been very good to schedule their hours so that they can be there for the students before they go to work and after they go to work. So it is a tremendous asset to San Angelo, Texas, and I am very, very proud that I've been a part of it. Thank you. All right, this is the time that we go to public comment. So anything that anyone has to say or wants to talk about or anything you want to do with the council, this will be your time. Let me read the legalities and then we'll open the floor up. Public comment. The council takes public comment on all items on the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input not on an item, public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration of the council at this time. The council may request an item to be replaced on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. On public hearing items, public input will be received on each item immediately following the council decision and prior to any action on the item. Each member of the public shall make the remarks from the podium and begin by stating their name. Remarks by each citizen will be limited to three to five minutes unless waived by a council member for all speaking on that matter. No individual will be allowed to speak more than once on any one subject until every citizen wishing to comment has done so. All right, public, line up and tell us what you think. Harry, state your name, three to five minutes.
This is Harry Thomas. I'm a community volunteer, and I want to say congratulations to Anthony Wilson and Brian Groves and their team on the six awards that they recently won. I'll also personally thank them and the rest of the city staffers for what they do for the city of San Angelo and the citizens of this great community. I also want to say congratulations to Brian for his selection in the 20 under 40 for this year's class. With this year's class and last year's class, we have the foundation of future leaders in San Angelo, and I feel comfortable in knowing that they're going to take on the issues that we've got coming. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
And to that, I will say amen and amen. We have a wonderful staff, and I'm very, very proud of them. State your name in three to five.
My name is Lee Bell. I'm a farmer, rancher, ranch farmed on high plains of Texas, the Permian Basin, and here recently in the Concho Valley. I am a member of the Lake Nazworthy Homewoman Association. I live at the lake and also on the Board of Directors and on the Architect Control Committee. I have been working here, moved here 25 years ago, and I love San Angelo and moved here on purpose. Anyway, working in the farming industry, I actually have maintained a lot of ponds and waterways and have had a chemical license for the past 50 years. And on our education, our study on those, one of our biggest problems we face in this area is our invasive vegetation, namely mesquite, salt cedar, regular juniper. And the item that I'm wanting to speak on after saying it is G, number 10, the Lake Nazworthy Master Plan Immediate Strategy. I just thought I would tell y'all a little bit about that, how that came to be, because I know you were here, Mr. Mayor, but some of you didn't realize just how that came to be. Paul Alexander was our representative.
Probably gonna have to ask you to wait until we get to that.
Oh, to that? Okay, we need to wait on that.
Because on our public comment, these are things that are not already on the regular agenda.
That's what they're, okay. Well, thank you.
I'll be sure you get an opportunity to speak when it comes to answer. Who else wants to speak? This is your opportunity. If there be no further public comment, then I'll open it up to the council. I will ask for council comment, and then we will ask for anything that needs to be moved. So do we have any comment from the council?
Just something I'd like to move, request to be moved when you're ready.
Okay, this is the time, sir.
Yeah, item number 11, a zoning ordinance matter. That matter is in Charlotte Farmer's District, and she couldn't be here today, and she requested that it be removed from the agenda, and so I'm just requesting that. On her behalf, she'll be here at the next meeting, and she would like for it to be moved to the next meeting so she can be involved in that zone change in her district. And she had requested that in writing.
I believe before we move that, I know we've probably got 30 or 40 people here that are, raise your hand those that are here on this. We got a mess over here. Do y'all want to put this off till next meeting, or do you want to handle it today?
Let's press forward.
I got one, press forward. Anybody else want to speak to this?
We are not permitted to postpone.
Okay, let's do this the democratic way. If you are here for the zone change, which is out in Southland, this is on the hotel?
Shouldn't we be voting on this to decide whether we're going to remove this or not? Let's not let them, Duane. Let's take a vote between us, don't you think?
Wouldn't you like to know how many, what they think, though?
I understand what they think. I think I do, but...
Let's take a consensus on what they think, and then we will divide, we will...
Mayor, I was gonna say, yeah, let's not let them vote, but at least a show of hands of who is here.
Well, that's what I meant. How many of you want to run this through today? Show me your hand. Buddy, you out of luck.
I've lost before.
How about the council? What do we think about consensus of council? It doesn't make me any difference either way. Rodney?
No, I would, if Charlotte wants to move to the next one, I'll let Charlotte decide that.
Marty?
I'm good with that.
Johnny?
Yeah, we can wait.
Don? And Winky? Well, that's six of us that says let's move it, so sorry. All righty, we will move number 11 to the next meeting then.
Please vote to table.
I would like to move...
Okay, if someone make a motion to...
I'll make a motion, or I'm moved that we table it till the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second to table this in the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Any comment? Any comment?
I think we already had public comment. Anyone not opposed, say nay. It will be moved. Sorry, folks, we'll see you next time. Any other items on the consent agenda that needs to be moved at this time? Okay, in that case, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of number 11.
That's not on consent. That's not consent.
It's a regular agenda.
Okay, we've changed our agenda around this time.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we'll get to that later. Okay, we will not approve the consent agenda because there has been an item placed in front of it. This is a change in the way the agendas usually work, and I am a slow learner, so we're gonna have to back up just a little bit. And we will take a regular item discussion, and then we will get into consent. The regular agenda and public hearing and comment is discussion pertaining to city council compliance with city charter qualification requirements. This is requested by council member Self. You have the floor, Marty.
Thank you. I'd like to make a statement. After the October 1, city council agenda where I recuse myself from a vote, it's been questioned whether or not I'm qualified to hold my city council seat. First of all, I'd like to say that I was not legally required to file the affidavit or even recuse myself from the vote. I did so to try and avoid any appearance of propriety. And secondly, I have no ownership in Texana or its successor, ASG Security. Thirdly, my company, Automatic Fire Protection, has no subcontract with Texana or ASG for this work, nor do they have to, nor does Texana or ASG Security have to hire Automatic Fire Protection to perform those inspections. I'd also like to say that contrary to the online article, I do not have a contract with the city for the airport terminal project. I have, I do not have any contracts with the city, and neither does my company, Automatic Fire Protection. Templeton Construction has the contract with the city for the airport terminal project. I am a, I do have a subcontract with Templeton Construction for the fire sprinkler renovation. AFP, or my company, Automatic Fire Protection, has no continuing service agreements with the city regarding any city facilities or projects. After consulting with the city legal department and with my private counsel, I've been advised that I do not constitute, that this doesn't constitute a disqualification from my office under the city charter. And therefore, I intend to continue to serve and fulfill the duties of my office that I was elected to, elected to by the people of my district. So I just wanted to clear the air.
Thank you, Marty. Anyone care to speak to this?
Yes, I do have a response, a brief response. Mr. Self is more than entitled to have his own opinion, but as a lawyer, I have a totally different opinion, and I think he is disqualified from being on the city council. The city charter prohibits a candidate or city council person from doing business with the city. There's no language in there that talks about the difference between a contractor or a subcontractor. In 2000, in the 2000 recent city charter election, the citizens overwhelmingly reconfirmed that they do not want a candidate or a council person to do business with the city. The language reads, "No member shall have any interest in the profits or emoluments of any contract, job, work, or service for the city." An emolument terms means compensation, gain, or benefit, and this is certainly the case here. It also says, "No member shall have an interest in the sale to the city of any supplies, equipment, or materials." The distinction has been attempted to be made that just because you don't have a written contract with the city, that you're not disqualified. I don't think, I don't think that's a fair construction of the language. And now, Mr. Self did file an affidavit, as he admits, saying that his company, Automatic Fire Protection, is doing business with the city, and now he's saying that he shouldn't have filed that. Well, I disagree totally, and that's not a proper construction of the law as I read it and as I briefed it. What people have got to understand is that as a Texas home rural city, we are governed by our city charter, and our city charter is just like a constitution for the U.S. Constitution or the constitution of the state of Texas. And we can't change that just by our interpretation up here at the council is what we think. We have to follow the letter of the law. The people have reaffirmed that they want this to be the way this is handled. There are serious problems with a person doing business with the city of San Angelo and being on the council, in my opinion, and that's why, of course, the citizens rejected the attempt to remove that provision from the city charter back in 2007. So, you know, my, the reason we have courts and the reason that we have the Attorney General's office is for people to litigate their differences, and I think the proper thing to do here, in all fairness, is to have Mr. Self fully disclose what all entities he owns an interest in that might be doing business with... disclose what all entities he owns an interest in that might be doing business with the city and the nature and extent of the contracts. And I think we should request an attorney general's opinion from the state of Texas and let the chips fall where they may. I, I want to read you an attorney general's opinion just briefly here, which totally contradicts what we just heard. This is attorney general's opinion in 2010, number GA 0796, states that an affidavit of recusal is required when the decision or vote of the city council will have a special economic effect on the business entity. Well, voting on a contract that Automatic Fire Protection is going to profit from is going to have a special effect on that business and I think that attorney general opinion is totally contrary to what we just heard. And so, I think the way to handle this is on the next regular city council meeting, I will put this on the agenda to request that this council ask for an attorney general's opinion from the state of Texas and if the council won't do it, I'll, I'll be happy to do that myself as a citizen.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, under a code of ordinances, Article 2.400, as far as city attorney, it's section 2.404, under advice, "Our city attorney shall be the legal advisor of the city and shall render advice on all legal questions affecting the city." Mr. Wardlaw, I respect the fact that you're an attorney, but we do have an attorney, a city attorney, that serves as a legal advisor for the city also. I would like to hear from our city attorney at this point. I know that everything that we do is we research everything very objectively to make sure that any advice that is given by our legal, by our legal team is something that we know was given without any subjectivity whatsoever. And I want to make sure that we do hear from Ms. Bullock at this point.
Good morning, council. Absolutely. And to move forward from here, we, we do, of course, consider the charter and the authority granted to the city council under the charter. And we will find that there is no procedure articulated in the charter for the city council to make a determination of whether a council member has forfeited his office. The, the charter is silent and for that reason, I would suggest and support two methods of making a legal and factual determination of whether that interest indeed is a disqualification. There is a recall petition available in our charter for the voters to make that determination or indeed, the state of Texas in a quo warranto suit. And, and the courts have said that is the exclusive remedy to determine whether factually and legally a council person has forfeited their office, meaning whether when they came into office, they did not meet the qualifications or whether during the term of office, no longer meets the qualifications. But our charter is silent, the city council doesn't have the authority to, to make a decision about this. It is a difficult question, it's a mixed question of law and fact. Indeed, as council member Wardlaw has explained to you, that yes, it's, it's, it is a term interests and who can best make that determination would be a court of law. I would say that perhaps the attorney general opinion that was cited was really about when a contract comes before council, that is, a direct contract in which a council member has a substantial interest, which isn't the case here at all because there was no contract with the city council member in question before council. And there is a procedure, it's articulated and it articulates a substantial interest that has an economic effect different than the public at large. That would be the test under that statute. However, I don't think it's applicable here because when the city contracted with Templeton, there wasn't an issue, that just wasn't an issue, it couldn't become an issue. So in any event, I do assert that we need to, because without express authority, we must either go to the voters, A, or B, have the state of Texas through the attorney general, the district attorney, or the county attorney file a lawsuit in quo warranto to determine qualifications in this case.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you feel that there has been, in your, in your opinion as a city attorney, do you feel that there's any problem with councilman Self?
And I looked at, in my analysis, I do not.
Okay.
And I...
You agree, you concur with what he said then?
Yes, I, I don't believe he has a disqualifying interest.
That's what I wanted to hear.
In layman's terms?
Go ahead, sir. In layman's terms, what we're saying here, if I'm understanding this correctly, is this vote was all done before Marty was ever a city council person. And even the thing that we, we talked about, I think they were doing an increase on the contract, he recused himself, and that's how this all came to light, when he did recuse himself from the vote on that, after the fact. Is that, is that right? Am I understanding it right?
Yes.
So, he's never voted on anything that could give him any capital gain or, or any, any gain whatsoever, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Rodney, that's not any, any...
Does anyone else care to speak to this in the first round?
Well...
Johnny?
Don?
Well...
And then I'll come back to you in a second.
If the bottom line is what, if Mr. Winky, Winky Wardlaw wants to get the attorney general involved, so be it, go, go with it. I think I've got more important things to, to worry about than, do, do your thing. If you, if you feel he's in the wrong, okay, that, that's your opinion. I want to concentrate on water, I want to concentrate on these ordinances that are here before us. And I don't think we need to beat this horse to death, just, Winky, do your thing and move on. And whatever comes out of it, comes out of it, you know? I have no problem, again, when we contracted with Templeton Construction, it was way before this man was even at this table. So, I don't know, I don't know all the details, but again, I think we need to concentrate and we got thousands of people watching us and watch us like a soap opera every day and this has a ripple effect on not, not just the city, but you know, the communities around us. So, we've got to move forward and stay positive on, on what's coming our way and I, I want to go there. You know, I don't want to worry about this, you know, muddying the waters type of stuff, you know, with all due respect to Mr. Wardlaw, but just do your thing and let's just move on. That's just my opinion.
Amen.
Don?
Well, when I ran, I ran on trying to make the streets better, trying to do things for our citizens, not fighting amongst each other up here. I, I, I think every person up here is an honorable person or they wouldn't be elected. I mean, we don't do it for the, for the money, we do it for the service to our community. And I, for one, have lived here my whole life, I have absolutely no problem with anyone up here. I, like I said, I ran to help San Angelo and I don't think that what we're doing right now is helping San Angelo.
Winky?
Yeah, that, that's not a legal defense, what's helping San Angelo or not. We have a duty, each one of us have a duty to uphold the city charter, including the city manager has a duty to do that. The fact that the contract might have been in existence before Mr. Self was, was elected and sworn in makes no difference legally whatsoever. In fact, he and all of us had to sign two affidavits stating we're not doing any business with the city. The first sworn affidavit was, at the time you filed to get on the ballot, you have to swear that you're not doing any business with the city. And the secondly, when, once you win the election and you're fixing to be sworn in, you have to file another affidavit saying you're doing business with the city, not doing business with the city at that time. And we all signed those affidavits under oath and the penalties of perjury. And as an attorney, I just, I'm just not going to, I think I have a duty and I think we're all sworn to uphold the constitution and laws of the state of Texas and the ordinance, all our ordinances and the city charter, and I'm just not willing to overlook that. It's nothing personal, but I, I do see, I do see, I, I helped Mr. Self in his campaign. I raised him money and I met with him and met with Frank White many times, his campaign manager, who passed away last weekend. So, you can laugh if you want to, but I believe in the rule of law and I know some people don't, some people don't believe in the constitution of the United States and they're fully willing to throw it in the trash, but I'm not one of those people.
Daniel?
Mayor, I do want to state that our city attorney staff spent countless hours researching this thing. It comes down to, at this point, Mr. Wardlaw, you've decided that this is how you've interpreted the, the charter. And you're right, I have a responsibility to make sure that the laws of the city, the charter and so forth are fulfilled also. But as I mentioned earlier, also have a legal advisor, we have a staff on, on, with the city at this point that do a lot of great work, they do a lot of research and they did a lot of it this week, sir, to come to a conclusion or render a legal opinion that quite frankly, I'm comfortable with at this point moving forward. Now, as Mr. Silvas just mentioned a little while ago, if you wish to pursue that moving forward, then by all means do so. At this point, I know that we, our legal team has rendered a, an opinion and I respect that. With that said, that's all I have.
And I agree with Mr. Silvas, I think you said it very well, Johnny. I'm tired of all this infighting. Makes us look like a bunch of schoolchildren up here and I'm, I'm tired of it. I am tired of it, I'm ready to move on and deal with the, with the issues of this city that are important to all of us and we're, we're doing nothing positive by fighting amongst ourselves. The city attorney has investigated this, he has hired an attorney that has investigated this, they have found no wrongdoing. In my opinion, if we're going to be after someone, we need Templeton Construction in here because Templeton is the one that got the contract and Marty simply subcontracted for Templeton and I, I see no problem at all. I'm going to open this up to public comment from the floor.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner and I was one of the people running against Mr. Self, but I'm not here to try to get him removed at all or anything. What I'm here is, I was also on the last charter review committee. And one of the reasons that this whole section of city charter was put before the voters and we probably didn't do a very good job of rewarding it or selling it, is because this part of the city charter is overly broad. If you go by the most strict possible interpretation of this law, somebody who's working at Walmart and somebody from the city comes in and buys anything, that would disqualify that person from holding an office, an elected office within the city. If you take a look over the history of the past several years since I've been here, there have been a number of people that if you did this strict a reading of that portion of the city charter, we would have probably had about half the council missing off of several of these because of one connection or another as either part of a retail establishment where they're getting, the city is doing business with, whether it's Walmart, one of the construction companies, a supplier, an electric company, you name it. And that confusion, that overly broad nature of it needs to be addressed. The state has done a lot of things to narrow it down to financial interest, control of the operation and decisions of the company, et cetera, and that is what we need to look at doing in our city charter if we are going to go beyond the state rules. We need to have something that is reasonable, protects the city, prevents conflict of interest, but doesn't prevent somebody from, that is, working at a local restaurant from running from city council because the city happened to pay for some function there. Thank you.
Before I ask for any more public comment, Alicia, would you look that form up? I want that form read in its entirety so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. Anyway, is there any other public comment on this item? Come forward, please, ma'am. State your name and you've got three to five.
Thank you, my name is Billy DeWitt and I really did try to hold my peace and sit in my seat, but I appreciated the comments that Mr. Silvas made. I certainly appreciate where Mr. Wardlaw feels that he has to bring this forward. I think it has been brought out, I appreciate Mr. Self letting us know what was going on up front, but you know, it just seems like there's such a divided faction on the city council and I'm not sure what that is all about. But as was stated, the city does need to move forward and to me, this should be a non-issue. San Angelo is so remotely, we're isolated from any major operation. As the gentleman before me said, it's going to be awfully hard to do business in San Angelo if you're a business person, that someone couldn't dig and find some minute point to try to get you to not, to, you know, to be invalidated. And I just, I just don't think that's right, you know? And maybe one of the disqualifications should be from having an attorney on the city council because every time I come to a city council meeting, I hear, well, I'm a lawyer, I'm a lawyer. We need people who care about the city and would like to move the city forward. And you know, when we spend however many minutes, we have spent on this, I appreciate the fact that, you know, Mr. Wardlaw can, as a citizen, he stated, as a citizen, he would, you know, he'll just do it on his own. Well, that's what I would suggest happen here. And, and, and let's, let's move on to important issues that adversely impact this community. I do not see Mr. Self as subcontracting with somebody adversely impacting his role and his ability to be objective and that's what we need, objectivity in making decisions about the city of San Angelo. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bullock?
Hi, my name's Mike Boyd. I concur, I just want to encourage y'all to move forward. As we know, Abilene's a major competitor of ours on the business side and as you know, the people in Abilene watch what happens in these city council meetings.
Yes, they do.
And time and time again, I've had people come to me and say, let's move forward, let's work on economic development, let's fix our water, let's get pro-business in here, which all of y'all support. And I encourage you to do that. If we have issues that need to be worked out that are not so important to me as a businessman and individual, then I ask you to do it in closed session. I ask you to come out in agreement and I ask you to come out with a smile on your face, but it's time for us to move forward. We've had six months of this, not only I think is the public unhappy with what's going on, I know y'all are unhappy with what's going on. We'll support you, we'll do whatever we can to make San Angelo the best place to live, but I ask you, please, let's get on with it.
You said it well, Mike, and I tell you, I get comments from Abilene in Midland and these that are watching our meetings too, and I'm getting the same exact feedback and I'm tired of it. Come ahead, Turner.
Yes, I, I think it, this in a way supports one of the things that Mayor Morrison brought up earlier at an earlier council meeting, it's time to have another charter review to do some cleanup on some of these areas that do need some clarification. This isn't the only place that we know in charter where there is some confusion, it's out of sync with state law and it's time to be looked at again. The second thing I want to make clear also is we, when we looked at modifying this because it was overly broad, there were three very competent attorneys, two ex-mayors and a lot of experience on that charter review committee that came to the conclusion, this part of the city charter needs some work. Thank you.
Jim, it'll be hard though to ever do away with that, I, I think. I mean, in a technical sense, you could actually say, I'm a, I'm a real estate broker, if I ever sold a house to an employee that worked for the city, technically, I'm getting a gain from that. I'm not saying that I have sold, well, actually, I probably have sold to several city members in the past. So you could come back and say to me, this would almost be the same as him, that I did gain for that in the past. So, I mean, you can, you...
...property that was used by a subcontractor to the city under the limits we're talking about right now is being exactly the same.
That's why I think that the way it's written, you have to have some flexibility in there in interpretation, but I'm all for Winky on this deal as far as if he wants to take this to the attorney general and the attorney general says that, that there is something here, well then we'll go for it then, then we'll have something that'll trump... Then we'll have something that'll trump our attorneys. But our attorneys are saying that it's good, let's just, let's drop it right now. You go to the Attorney General, or you go to the county attorney here and see if they wanna do something against it, and then let's move on. Let's be done with it. Let's stop right now.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me add also, and I totally appreciate Ms. DeWitt and her coming forward, but, you know, if you wanted to get down to the nitty-gritty, you know, the tax abatement that we awarded to Afticon, well, my wife has worked out there 30-plus years. So should I have recused myself? I attended ASU, we're going to talk about golf carts soon, do I need to recuse myself? How much into detail do we go? I mean, our hands would be tied if that was the case. So, again, I, I don't know. I'm just, yes, ma'am.
Yes, and in sync with looking at how to potentially revise that part of the charter, there are studies on home rule charter provisions. Some of them eliminate the requirement completely and defer, as Mr. Turner says, to state law that has stepped up from the common law approach, which is just that interest being so broad. Additionally, some charters have language in an ordinance that is very, very specific in defining what the interest is. So I would be available and very happy to look at all the home rule city charters, and some of them have modernized and moved into a different approach to protecting the public, either deferring to state law, defining the interest, or eliminating that qualification criteria completely.
Do we have further comment from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mayor Kirkpatrick, and I just say, I think it's pretty sad whenever a comment was made about having an attorney on the board, on the council. I think it's important that we have attorneys on our board, because that lets them look into things that may be pushed under the table. We have a lot of that going on in Washington. We don't want it to happen here in San Angelo. I believe that y'all need to get together. I've only attended three meetings, and I see a big division in the council, and I don't like it. I'd like to see you all join together, and if things like this are brought up, let's not fight about it and say that we're mad because someone brought it up. So I think that we need to give Mr. Wardlow a hand, because he was willing to bring this up. I don't know Mr. Self, I don't know anything about the business, but I do see a division in our council, and I don't like to see that.
Thank you, ma'am.
A hand for-
Three to five minutes. State your name, please.
Okay, Bill Richardson. Like most of the audience, I'd like to see the council, like, move forward on the city issues, and I think one thing that has to be said is that, you know, justice not only has to be done, it has to be seen to be done. And I, I think it's a little bit on Mr. Self's shoulders to clarify that with the public. I think he has done it here to an extent, but I think it has to be clarified further. Thank you for your time.
Do we have further comment?
It was just a discussion item, so-
Yes, it's just a discussion item. I was reading, there was one thing here I wanted to... I want to read, it's Section C here. It said, "Any contract in which a member is or becomes interested may be declared void by the council." So the only, the only authority that the council, that the charter gives us as a council is that we declare the contract void. And I am not willing to bring Templeton Construction in here and declare the airport board contract, because a sub won a contract in order to work for Templeton, and that is the, by the, by the charter, that is the only authority that we have. So I think, I'm ready to put this thing to rest, unless Mr. Wardlaw would like to take it further as a citizen, and it is 100% his authority, and I say, do whatever you want to do, but as far as the council, I'm ready for this to be over. I see no foul, no harm, I see nothing that Marty has done wrong. Let's get a consensus here. Mr. Fleming.
I want to move on. Yeah, he can, he can do it on his own.
Johnny.
Move on.
I'm saying the same thing. Move on, do it on your own. Don.
Move on.
There's a consensus of four. Let's move on to the next item. All right, we're back to the consent agenda now. We had one item that we tabled and moved till the next meeting, item number 11.
That wasn't on the consent.
It was on the regular item.
That's on the regular.
I think it's time for a break.
I think we're getting there.
Okay, let's, I'll last now. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone wants to move to the regular agenda from the council? Are there any requests from the public to move an item from consent to regular? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as is.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion, we have a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It's 10:02, and I need a break. Let's take a few. It is 10:21. And our 10-minute break didn't take but 20 minutes that time, so it's ready to get started And we are ready for item number nine. I finally got the, able to de-referentiate between the consent and the regular. I have had a request to move number 17. This is about the golf carts. We've got people who want to speak to that, and I also know the chief's in here. After we deal with item number nine, would it be all right to, with the council, if we brought 17 next? Do I have any problems down here? Any problems here? Okay, well, let's take number nine, and then we will go to item 17, so the chief can get back to his own duty. Number nine is consideration and possible action on a petition for variance under the Code of Ordinances, Water Conservation, Drought Contingency Plan, Section 11203E, to the allowable watering frequencies and time of day for new to planted landscape submitted by the San Angelo Independent School District. Mr. Dixon, you are on, sir.
Thank you, council and mayor. Good morning. This morning, we have a petition from the San Angelo Independent School District, the variance for the drought level two watering restrictions. As you know, currently in drought level two, November the first through March 31st, it's only once every 14 days for outside watering, and there's no allowance for new landscapes. SISD is requesting or wanting to overseed their UIL baseball and softball fields with winter rye for the sole purpose of saving and extending the life of their existing Bermuda turf. They're estimating that the process that they are proposing will require 960,000 gallons of water to overseed two baseball fields and two softball fields, and these fields are located at Lakeview High School Athletic Complex and also at San Angelo Stadium Complex. What the school is requesting is to be allowed to water the four fields identified up to twice a day for 10 or 15-minute periods for a duration of five consecutive days. And then after that, for the next 21 days, they're requesting to be allowed to water twice per week for 10 or 15 minutes to allow the establishment of the rye turf. And if we also grant this variance, they are willing to offer an alternative, that they will cease all irrigation watering at schools and alternate department sites, which they have in their documentation that in November of last year resulted in almost 5 million gallons of water. So there could possibly be a 5 million gallon savings from them, not watering the other sites, and they're wanting to use 960,000 gallons to establish this rye turf. I believe Mr. Turner is here from the school district, if you have any questions for him.
Council?
Ricky, quick question. You said the 5 million gallons is applied where? What other sites?
They have in their documentation that the alternate department sites, and I can't clarify that, but Mr. Turner probably could.
Okay.
Yes, sir, this is just for this period.
Alternate sites being Carver, Hayes, Sam Houston Project Center, those alternate sites right there, that's the ones that we're doing. As you're all aware, we've got the playground fields that exist at all of our elementary sites. We weren't gonna water those. The one thing is, we need to make sure that we maintain the consistency of our baseball fields and make sure that they remain safe and remain up to the UIL standards as required. In, in following the restrictions through the drought contingencies, we wouldn't be able to do that to get the winter rye in, and that's what we're asking for. We will shut down all the other watering. We would like to be able to maintain our landscaped areas, the gardens, the memorial trees, the stuff like that that the schools have established, and we do have a few of them. So we would like to maintain those.
AJ, so the 5 million, tell me again, it's every, every school, every playground, every-
That was the total November bill from last year for all of our watering. That was just the gallons that we used.
5 million gallons.
It was close to 5 million gallons, yes, sir. We're just asking for 960,000. Now, we're probably gonna get close to 100,000 if we do our landscape areas and our trees and stuff, but we'll still be far below what we, what we used last year.
Ricky, what do you think about this? Give me the city's perspective.
I believe with them willing to sacrifice some of their other watering, that it's a plus for us, even if they are allowed to do this watering.
Let me ask you another question. If they watered once in 14 days and put an inch of water, which is what we allow, how many gallons would that take as opposed to this 15-minute, twice a day? What would be the difference? How many, do you have any ideas, sir?
I do not. I don't know what size fields these are and, and all of that information, but if they're gonna seed this with rye grass once every 14 days, wouldn't make it. You know, if the rains continue, they may not have to use that much water anyway, so there is some, some hope there that they won't have to use that, but they won't be able to establish their rye grass if it's only once every 14 days.
Well, if we allow this, we know it'll cost us 960,000 gallons. If we don't allow it and they do the one in 14 days, they're gonna use half that much.
Plus the other 5 million gallons that they would have put on their other irrigation.
Council, discussion.
Okay, this is the problem I have with this. We are not taking our water issues serious. The city has got blinders on, and we are not looking at what we need to be doing. When you're saying, I will save this, I'll save you $5 million over there, you need to do that anyways. Whether we put the water on those baseball fields or not, you need to turn that water off, and we need not be using that water. So that should be out of play completely. I, I, I'm one that loves baseball more than anybody, but I also realize that 12 months from now, 13 months from now, we don't have any water, there ain't gonna be baseball, there ain't gonna be football, no playgrounds, no nothing. I'm totally against this. I don't want to open this up. When I got elected and I ran for this position, my number one thing was water for this city, and water for this city is drinking water and usable water. We're gonna have to cut these things down, and we need to take, we need to tighten our belts and suck it up and get tough on this situation, and we need to be telling the general public, this is a hard times. We live in West Texas, in the desert, and we have no water. So things are gonna have to die. I have a, my yard, you drive by my yard right now? It's beautiful. It looks good. A year from now, I probably won't have a yard. I know that, and I realize that. I would rather have drinking water and water for my kids than water for this baseball field. I am not gonna be for this.
I understood what you said. Any other comments from council?
AJ, I wanted to, you gotta understand what, what we're dealing with, you know? We all do, you know? And I appreciate you and Jim and what you're doing out there, but, you know, newly sotted or newed grass areas, man, I don't know if that was thought of ahead of time, but it's, you know, 960,000 gallons, children out there, people out there, they're going to need it. It's tough. It's, it's a tough choice, so. Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Jim Elson. I'm a maintenance director for the school system, and I can assure you that we do take our watering serious. If we stop the watering, we are gonna save water. If we don't, by the practice we have right now and the laws right now, we can go ahead and keep watering. So our fields cost a lot of money. We got our money from taxpayers. There's a good chance we'll lose these fields. If that's what's decided, if we can't get the winter rye to be watered, and we understand about water, we do everything we can.
But you're kind of blackmailing us on this, saying you're not gonna water at these other schools and we'll do 5 mil- That's what you said.
We're not trying to blackmail anybody.
Are you gonna-
We're gonna go by the law. That's why we're here, to ask for permission.
No, you said that you wouldn't do that over there.
And we're trying to give something in return.
Will you tell me right now that you won't do that, even if this is voted down?
No, because I'm not gonna lose everything. I'm gonna follow what the law is.
Water is, water is everything.
I understand that.
I don't think you do.
I'm just saying, by the law right now, we can keep watering the other field, the other areas.
But we shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't. Like on my yard, I don't have any sprinklers on there or anything. I'm not doing once in 14 days.
I understand that.
I'm trying to stretch it out as far as I can, as far as possibly can.
I understand that.
It's not, just go ahead and do it.
No. We do it, we're going to do it to keep what's alive there, our trees-
But maybe we don't need what's alive.
-in our other areas. Right now, we are.
This is my opinion. We, I think we need to-
I understand that, and that's why we're here, because-
That's exactly right.
-we are asking to follow the law, and we're asking for an adjustment, and in return, we're willing to give something up, because the baseball fields or the athletic fields in general are a lot harder to bring back if we lose them than flowers or trees and the other areas.
I agree with that, but who's next? Is ASU gonna be up here at the next meeting asking for the same thing?
Well, right now, some people don't have to follow them, the water rules.
Who's that?
I'm just saying that.
Winky, you and Don, you and, y'all have anything to add to this?
Tell me what you're gonna oversee again, a couple of baseball fields, the two high school baseball fields?
The two high school baseball fields.
And softball.
And softball.
There, how many, how many of those are there? Two softball fields or just one?
There's two, two baseball, two softball.
There's four fields complete, and we, we oversee it every year. We've been doing it for years.
Right.
And we can't do it if we don't have the water. There's no sense in buying the seed. It won't, it won't take.
I think you're making a reasonable request. I, I, we're all scared about running out of water, but I think we want to use our water that we have, as long as we have it, to, to maintain as much as we can, and then if we have to haul in water to drink, we, we just haul it in. But, you know, we, we know in Lano that they, they shut off all their watering and all their trees and landscaping died, and then it, it rained about 30 days thereafter, and then you had the devastation. So I'm, I'm sort of, I'm sort of willing to bet on the come and, and try to keep what we've got going and not have any kind of undue economic disaster in this town.
We just hate to lose the fields, 'cause the fields are very expensive to put back. And I understand we have to sacrifice, and so we try to come up with a reasonable sacrifice to keep the fields, and some of it comes down to the safety of the children.
Well, let's get down to a sacrifice. Cut half those fields. Give me something to give you something. You say, how many fields is there total?
Right now, we have to use our fields-
All of them?
-full, yes, sir. And not only do we do that-
But there's a sacrifice. You just said that you'll sacrifice.
ASU uses our fields too.
You're not sacrificing. We, we all, we all need to get into this mentality.
We're giving up, we're giving up the other areas in a possibility we may lose them other areas.
We need to get to this mentality where we are gonna sacrifice. People say they're gonna sacrifice, but they're not really sacrificing. We need to sacrifice. We need to start-
I understand that. And, and we're willing to give up other areas. We may lose them.
But you should give up the other areas anyways.
Don, did you have anything to add to this?
Yes. Mr. Dixon.
Marty.
Can, can you kind of check my figures here and see if my memory is anywhere close? If we get the, the hickory coming, we'll have 9.3 million gallons coming through?
We have a possibility, we have 9 million for a short term. If everything's good to go.
Okay. Right now, we're using 11.
About nine or 10 right now.
And normally, this time of year- And normally, this time of year, we use about eleven?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've had some rain, so it's down.
Okay. So, basically, we're at a two million gallon deficit. If we don't have lake water and theoretically, all we have is our hickory water.
Theoretically, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We're setting what, about fifteen months right now, Mr. Dixon?
It's probably closer to sixteen now. We picked up a little bit in OC Fisher that we're going to start using, so.
I'd like to leave it there.
Well, I know, but you'll be drinking it next week.
Johnny?
Just going to ask Jim, I know that you're willing to sacrifice the five million gallons you could do away with if we allowed you this nine hundred and sixty thousand gallons?
That's what's calculated by last year.
Five million gallons?
We calculate our utilities every month. Some of you have been previous board members. You've heard my reports monthly, what we use. So, that's what we're basing on, is past history.
So, if we don't give you this variance, allowing you the nine hundred and sixty thousand, you're going to use five million? Is that the bottom line?
I will continue what I've been practicing.
But is that close to the right amount, five million?
Wow, that's a lot of water. Oh, that's, man, you sure opened up a Pandora's box on this deal. That makes me sad.
Well.
I mean, really.
It makes me sad to think that, that we're going to lose our fields and.
I know, but it's five million.
This is the only other option, so it's out of my control. The yes or no is your control.
You can turn, you can turn the water off. You should be turning that water off.
I have turned the water off.
It's, let's vote, I'm just getting madder and madder.
Take a chill pill. What say, Marty?
It's five million gallons over what timeframe? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
If someone wants to make a motion, if someone wants to move acceptance or denial of this, I'll ask for a second and then we'll take it to the public.
I move that we deny this.
I'm waiting for a second. Still waiting for a second.
I'll say it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Let's hold this up to the public now. Come way in on this one. You gentlemen better stick around pretty close. State your name, you got five minutes.
This wasn't what I was going to talk about, but this is something that I do. On my ranch in Concho County, I do use winter wheat, winter rye. And I have food class, I plant it. I have no irrigation down there at all. I tried to get it in on first September and I've done really good on a wet fall. This is one of the wettest falls I ever saw. I tell you what, if it's me, I think you ought to try to dry land it in there, Great Plains drills and stuff and fix that up. And I think this would be a good, good time to take a chance on that because we are having a wet fall. And like I said, I've got beautiful crops down there in Concho County.
Faith of a mustard seed. Who else?
Bill Richardson. I think this should be approved for the school. Remember, this is serving our children. The children of our community use those fields and use the recreation areas and get involved in the sports with the school system, which is, my son was involved in it and it was great. It keeps the children occupied. And I think this, this would be showing support to the school system and to the children in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else care to weigh in?
Can I answer that?
Yes, sir.
I support the kids a hundred percent. But when those kids are thirsty and we don't have any water, who's going to be supporting them? That's why I'm standing up for this. I'm not going to give in on this water situation. That's what I was voted to be in this position for. It's my number one thing.
State your name. You've got three to five minutes.
The name is Richard Bastardo. And, I mean, there's just no doubt in my mind, Mr. Fleming is right to a certain point. But Jim Ellison is right too. Like the last person here talked about, he believing in helping the schools out. I just don't, I just don't know which way to go on this because if you turn them down and you lose all that vegetation, you might end up with a second dust bowl in this country and it'll be right here in Texas again. Thank you.
My name's Nathan Simpson, and I think you should vote for them to do that. They're making a reasonable offer. They're willing to save five million gallons and only use about a million. At times waters are tight, they are making a cut.
But can I, can I answer you? They should, they should save the five million no matter what. That's, I mean, that's just common sense. The five million's off the table. Really, we're talking about one million.
Until you change the law and the requirements, they have a right to that, unfortunately.
But they shouldn't. It's not.
You're right. They should. A lot of things should be done. But I see the city putting in irrigation pipes out there by the, by the highway there on the loop.
That's not the city, that's the state.
That's the state. Who's going to be watering that? Where's that water coming from? Is it coming from us?
I don't know. If I had to say, it wouldn't be any.
Right. But they're making a reasonable offer. They're taking their assets and they're putting a priority on it like everybody should.
Yes.
And they should continue that throughout the year, putting a priority. If they want to put a priority on them fields, that's their priority, that's great. They're saving us a lot of water in the long run.
They're not, they're not saving, that's blackmail.
No, that's the smart thing to do. They're being reasonable.
Being blackmailed. I can tell you right now, I see how the vote's probably going to go and you're going to get what you want. I'm voicing my opinion up here and I respect your opinion also on this. And I hate that we might lose those fields, but Lee Bell, when he just said that about, why didn't they, first of all, why didn't they put in this rye two weeks ago?
There's a lot of things that should be done.
Yeah, I mean, it should have been done two weeks ago.
We get the laws in there to take care of it. Y'all got to change the plan.
Let's move on.
Okay.
Let's move on. Anyone else? Any other opinions out there? Tell us what you think. Come on, Turner.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner again, still for current time. And I am somewhat favorable towards having the school be able to take care of the fields, but I do not like this approach where they are coming up here. And it does feel very much like blackmail. Just because a citizen can go out and water a certain amount doesn't mean that that's good for either the citizen or the community to take and go to the max all the time and abuse it. And threatening somebody, well, if you don't let me have my way, I'm going to take and do what I know I shouldn't be doing anyway, comes off as rather counterproductive. And I expected much better of our representatives from the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Turner. Come ahead, sir. You've already spoke once. Hang on just a minute, Bill. Let's see if anyone else wants to speak before you come forward. Anyone else care to speak? It's your turn if you want to speak. Okay, Bill. Three, three minutes.
Bill Richardson, I don't think this is blackmail. I think this is, they're offering an alternative, you know, to what they generally do. They're going to change their plan. That's all they're asking for, okay? They can legally water the rest of the area under the present use and use five billion gallons. What they offered was a trade-off. It's not blackmail. It's consensus. It's, you know, compromise, yeah. Thank you.
I'm about to call for the vote unless someone else. You want to make a parting shot?
Jim, while you were walking up, let me ask you real quick. Newly seeded, it's a done deal? It's already been seeded? It's been?
No, it has not. I have started prepping the fields and we're ready to go. But I don't want to invest, especially taxpayers' money on seed that we know won't work. I can't predict the rain. But what I came back up here for is that, obviously, this is my first time talking at a council, so I am a little nervous. So, I will say this. We as a school district and we as me, and I'll speak as Jim Ellison, we have no intention of coming here to blackmail anybody. We just thought you would like to know the numbers and what we could offer. We're basically trying to compromise. We're saying we, if we lose our flower beds, if we lose some shrubs, you know, if we lose that type of area, it is not as hard to put back as it is to start to rebuild the fields if we wear out the grass that is there. And our fields are used almost every day. But we or Jim Ellison had no intention of coming here and trying to blackmail anybody. Thank you very much.
This is, this is for one month, the month of November?
This is for once a year, we do this. Okay?
Johnny?
Jim, so the five million that you're willing to compromise on, is it going to be, you're not going to use them at all? You're telling us right now that you're willing to sacrifice?
We are turning, we are, we will turn that area off. Hopefully, we don't know. We're taking a chance. Everybody is right. It may rain and we may not lose either one of them.
Right.
But if I have to choose between losing the playing fields and the other areas, I can recover the other areas quicker and cheaper than I can them fields.
Do you know or does Ricky Dixon know how much you would pay for the nine, the nine hundred and sixty thousand gallons he's going to use?
I do not know offhand.
Michael, any? Off the top of your head? No?
I'm sorry, I do not know.
Because I kind of like what the condition of the grass you have at San Angel Stadium, how it's doing. So, what I'm saying is maybe you need to look into the artificial type field.
We are, there are plans right now to put some artificial turf in. Right now, being discussed at our practice fields.
Yes.
And our practice banned marching fields. So, we are trying to be proactive. And we are only watering when we need to. Not only is it good for the city, but it's also good for the taxpayers that pays the utility bills. We monitor them monthly and.
So, you're telling me you were, you're going to turn off the faucet on the five million gallons that you would have used?
Yes, sir. I don't want to lose both.
Right.
So, I'm sorry it comes across that way, but I'm not really blackmailing you. I'm just using what's available to me and putting a priority on the fields. So.
Let's take a vote.
Thank you.
Motion has been made that we deny the request that the school district has made. It has been seconded. It's time to vote. All of those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those for allowing it, say nay, I guess. Got one?
Nay.
Nay.
Well, we got a three-three on this one. So, I guess we'll deal with it next meeting. We had three nays and three ayes. All of those in favor of denial, hold up your hand. Denied the school district. All of those in favor of allowing the school district to water. That's a tie. That's a tie, so we can't do anything with this one. Count Johnny twice. I don't know anything to do, but just put this in on the next agenda when we have a seventh member and we'll deal with it again. We'll deal with it in two weeks. Want to work?
It's too late to plan. We need to know that.
Anybody want to change your vote?
The hardest thing I had is just, it just sticks in my craw that you're saying that you'll stop watering over there if we vote this through. Well, you need to stop watering over there anyways. And you're shaking your head no. Let's.
I think it's time, I think it's time that we realize the reality of the situation. We are in dire, dire straits. And if we don't get rain, we're going to lose a whole lot more in ball fields. So, I'm not going to change my vote. Put it on the next agenda. Let's move on. Number seventeen. Number seventeen is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending chapter ten traffic control regarding the operation of golf carts. Ordinance of the city of San Angelo, Texas, amending chapter ten traffic control of the San Angelo Code of Ordinances by adding article ten seventeen hundred, operation of a golf cart on public streets, regulating the operation of golf carts on public streets, providing for a penalty for the violation of this ordinance, providing for repealing savings and severability clauses providing for an effective date of this ordinance. Chief Tim Voskis, you are on, sir.
Thank you. Okay. A while back, you asked us to look at proposing an ordinance to address the golf cart issue. I believe the ordinance has been placed in front of you or you've had it. You can see some of the things that we had. And really, what I'd like for us to discuss right now is basically, we have some questions that we believe need to be clarified as far as what counsel is desiring before we proceed forward. Obviously, there's some issues in regards to the amount on the permit would be something that would need to be discussed amongst yourselves. Secondly, we would, we feel that we need to inspect all of them whether you decide to charge them or not. So, it's going to take up time from our department to inspect the golf carts. There is also, I think we had a discussion on allowing a government agency to not have to pay those permits, but we would still have to do the inspections. The other issue, and I'm going to let Sergeant Kennedy come up in just a moment and answer some of the questions or discuss some of the issues with you, was a speed limit. You know, lowering the speed limit to thirty miles an hour would have to be the roadway that they can operate a golf cart on instead of thirty-five. Instead of thirty-five, moving that down to thirty, obviously for safety issues. Some of the other things that I think need to be discussed was the age requirement as far as being inside the golf cart and having a driver's license, valid driver's license in order to operate the golf cart. Now, we do understand that this is specific to the entities that you asked us to address, which was ASU, UPS, and the apartment complex, those type of things. You also have the availability to adjust this ordinance to allow an area such as Bentwood to have a little more rain in regards to how they operate their golf carts in a particular area. And Corby, is there anything else that I need to touch on? Okay. Yeah, he's back up. He's been handling, he's done a good job with this and so is legal. So, questions, comments, we're here.
Questions, counsel?
Chief, on the streets that are doing thirty-five now, which streets are those? If you would remind me?
Well, most residential streets are going to be thirty miles an hour or less. I believe Avenue Inn is a thirty-five mile per hour roadway. Jackson is forty. And so, if we, if we allow ASU to operate that vehicle, obviously, we don't want them driving down Avenue Inn.
Right.
Okay. We don't want any golf carts on Avenue Inn. But they also have to cross Avenue Inn to get to the president's house. And so, we're okay with them crossing a roadway thirty-five mile an hour zone, but not necessarily traversing on one, yes.
We can write that in the ordinance.
Yes. And this is listed as a first reading. But, I mean, if you like it as is, y'all can move forward. But I'm just, we're here now really for me is to discuss if there's any issues with this ordinance that need to be amended before we actually start moving forward.
Do we need to adjust this permit fee? That may be something we need to.
That's what I was going to ask. Twenty sounds low to me.
Yeah. And would y'all go out there or do they need to bring the carts to you?
Probably would be easier and safer for us to send someone to the facility. Now, again, I'm not, I'm not picking on ASU, but they are, they are a government agency. So, you need to decide if they're going to be exempt from paying those permit fees. But I can't remember, how many do they have? They have sixty-two golf carts that we would have to inspect every year.
Well, Joe Moon Yost is out there. Can you answer that, sir?
Well, I would like to expand. It doesn't just apply to Angel State. It applies to Goodfell Air Force Base in the city of San Angelo. If we're going to talk about the three governmental entities, the federal, the state, and the local municipalities. So, it doesn't just include ASU. So, when we're talking about inspecting golf carts, we're talking about raising the fee. We're talking about raising the fee for everybody. I like the way it starts out and I appreciate the work the city attorney's office has done, the police department's done, section ten seventeen oh two, we're talking about applicability. And A, it says golf carts, utility vehicles owned and/or operated for official government purposes by governmental employees are exempt from regulation of this code. And I just wondered, are we exempt or are we not exempt? And when we're talking about, is the state exempt? Is ASU exempt? Is the city exempt? Is Goodfell exempt? Or are we going to piecemeal it and try to include certain entities? I mean, it's either all or none is the way I see it. And that's why, as reading through the, through the ordinance, you see certain sections in there where it does, again, bring up the entities again. So, it makes you wonder, are you exempt or are you not exempt? I mean, it's that, to me, it's that simple. And if we're exempt, then we're going to comply with what the laws are, the state of Texas and what we have to do there. But as far as the city ordinance goes, I mean, do we have to comply? But as far as the city ordinance goes, I mean, do we have to comply? If we have to comply, then I'm sure the city and the Goodfellow Air Force Base have to, have to comply also.
Would you be opposed to a $20 inspection fee?
Would I be opposed?
As, as Angelo State, as a representative of Angelo State?
Look, as long as the city gets charged, and Goodfellow gets charged, we're treated the same equally. I mean, I'm not opposed to anybody.
That's fair.
Sure.
Yeah, there's a service being provided.
I mean, I'm, I'm agreeable with whatever, you know, it applies to everybody. And I was, and just as a, a comment, I was at the Riverfest, and I saw a lot of city-owned golf carts that surely weren't inspected and weren't meeting code, but I'm not going to say anything about that.
Let's not go there.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you whispered that.
Yeah, glad you didn't.
I will say, our police department golf carts, emergency alternate vehicles do meet those codes. And, and really, the exemption is, is, I don't think that we should issue an exemption for golf carts to not meet these requirements as we prescribed in the ordinance, but if, it's your choice whether you want to exempt them from the permit fee. That's what I was trying to imply to you.
I don't have a problem with the permit fee. I mean, there's a service rendered there, and it's going to take time. Counsel? Don, Winkie? Anybody else want to talk to this?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the fee. I think, I think that's reasonable because of service rendered. I, I think that's fine. I, I think the, the ordinance needs to, to read, but I also think that our city ones need to comply with this, just like everything else. I don't think there needs to be any exemptions.
Agreed. You have bottled that, Daniel?
I have no problem whatsoever.
Johnny?
Chief, aren't most of these carts on camp, or Joe Munoz on campus anyway? I mean, sure, they travel to the President's House and on Van, I mean, it sounds like they're mainly on campus anyway, or do they have to travel streets, or?
Very rare. I mean, they're only used for, for maintenance, and also, our food service department uses them to travel in between cafeterias, or used by our admissions office to give tours. So part of the ordinance where it says no one under 16, things like that, I'm kind of, are we exempt from that, or are we not exempt from that? I mean, so there's a lot of in-between that I'm not sure exactly what applies to a state entity, what applies to a city entity, or what applies to a federal. I mean, we have certain things that we have to have exemptions for, or we won't be able to do tours, or even our parking services who issue our tickets, I mean, they use golf carts. I can assure you right now that every golf cart that we have meets...
Are you telling us that you have 16-year-olds driving carts there on campus?
Not driving carts, but riding carts.
Oh, riding.
You know, because we do give families tours and things like that, so.
Didn't I just talk about driving?
Operating is what it says.
Operating has to have a valid driver's license.
Yes. I, I don't see the problem there.
They also have a, a, something in there about a passenger being over the age of 16 in those carts.
Oh. See, that's kind of...
Well, I see where the problem comes in. I thought it was just the operator had to be over 16.
Let me say something. I, you know, this was a, this was a deal that really needed to be addressed, obviously. You know, we, we have cited a, a few golf cart operators, ASU, UPS, Southland Arms, you know, if they were out there violating the law, we were writing the citations. You know, our focus is to try to provide you something that, that you can work with as a council, and, and our priority is obviously public safety. And there's always going to be risk involved when we allow this vehicle on a public roadway. And so that's why we have gone with some of these other things. Now, we did rely on another city that passed an ordinance that, that, we relied heavily on their ordinance, and we were, we liked a lot of their wording. The 16-year-old thing is, you know, if they're doing business, and they really need have, you know, are they going to have somebody under the age of 16 in there anyways? You know, probably not. But as far as ASU, I don't know what all they use their golf carts for. But for us, ultimately, it's about public safety, and that's what we need to be focused on.
Not all those golf carts are going to be used on public, as far as roads and so forth. I mean, you, you have 62 golf carts. You have a, a certain number, actually, that probably will be on, on streets, right? I mean, you're not going to have every single one of them.
Very rarely. The only time that they probably would use them on the road is especially during the semesters. We have over 6,000 students, and it gets really crowded, driving down the main through a fair of the campus, and so occasionally, they might have to go down Van Aventer or something like that to avoid. Very rarely do they even go to the President's, whom in a golf cart they have in the past, traveled down Campus Avenue to get down to, to the President's home, but very rarely did they do that. We usually use pickups for doing something like that. Like I said, since in the mid-'90s, we've been doing this, and this is a good time to bring it up. We need clarification on this, so I'm glad we're doing this. But as far as ASU, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but ours are just like the city. We use them for maintenance, you know, and try to maintain the campus.
I can't see that that 16, 16-year-old would hurt you out there, Joe.
I'm sorry.
I, I can't see that by keeping the provision that you have to be, that no person younger than 16 years of age may be transported, transported. I don't see that that would hurt you at ASU.
Well, we have, we have families who...
Yeah, when they have tours. They have 10, 12-year-old...
Tours of the university, we have these limousine golf carts that have like eight students or eight people, and they bring their families, and so as a result, we give the entire family a tour of the university. And so they're included in the tour. That's about the only time you'll have young folks or young people on a golf cart.
Well, I don't see that that being safe. Going across the street with kids in it, I, I don't know, that's just me. I don't see... I'd like to leave that in there, but I'm just one vote. Johnny?
No, I was just going to say, and I appreciate what Corby and the chief are, you know, the bottom line is safety, but I only feel that even when you're giving the tours, it's even before the, the classes start anyway, the semester starts, so you've got very little traffic out there anyway. I, I guess there's a lot of students, but what I'm saying is, I don't want to tie your hands down. If I've got a 12-year-old brother that I'd like to bring along, along, along with my mom and dad, you know, that's where I think we're getting maybe too, I don't know, we're just trying to slice and dice this thing just too thin. And, but again, the bottom line is safety. I don't have a problem with 15, 12-year-old on a cart. That's just me.
Yeah, I don't either.
We give tours every day at one thirty, and even on weekends if necessary. So there are tours ongoing all the time, every day. And again, there are students, there are families who have members of their family that are under, you know, that are 16 and under, and so they jump on the carts too, and we just, we give everybody a tour. They want to keep everybody...
Rodney?
Now, this area is not going to include Bentwood anymore, is it? Or does this ordinance pertain to that?
No, no. This ordinance pertains to, to, pretty much to businesses. That's what, that's what we're dealing with. You know, as far as Bentwood, we still have the state law that, that we can use there.
Two miles of a golf course, isn't it?
Yeah. Is it two or one?
Two miles.
It's two miles within a golf course, back and forth to the golf course, having to play golf, no, currently no age restriction, no anything else like that. And, and you can actually go in there and, and say, you know, in the Bentwood area, we're going to let anybody and everybody drive a golf cart, whether they're going to the golf course or not. That's totally up to y'all. We're just here to offer options. You know, one of the recommendations we made was to drop that speed limit from 35 to 30 miles per hour on the roadway.
Would that be the entire length of Avenue Inn?
Well, yeah, I mean, Avenue Inn...
I mean, what, Avenue Inn, that's Johnson.
In other words, in other words, we don't want the vehicles operated on Avenue Inn.
Right.
Okay. They can cross Avenue Inn.
They can cross it.
They can cross it to get to campus and, and go to the President's House, but we don't want the golf carts up and down Avenue Inn.
And we can say that in our ordinance.
Well, we say that when we drop the speed limit down to 30 miles per hour.
You have a problem with that, Joe?
No, they're, they're never on A and M. I mean, on, on Avenue Inn. They usually stay on, either on campus or Van Aventer to cross Jackson and get to their, their shop, wherever that may be, and, and Johnson Street, I think, is 25 miles an hour anyways.
Is it?
Maxwell Branham, and I actually drafted this ordinance. I worked with the city attorney's office, and I just wanted to ask your clarification. You discussed it earlier, but could you clarify as to whether you wanted to just inspect all golf carts, government or not, or whether it was just to not apply the permit fee to government entities, but still inspect them?
I would, I would say inspect all golf carts and charge everyone equally. Now, that would be my, that would be my thoughts on it, if I've got, if I've got a consensus that'll follow me.
All right. Thank you very much.
And along with that, though, if, if there's, if ASU has 62 golf carts, and they only use 12 of them on the streets, the other ones on campus only, they can designate those and, and...
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get to also, is that...
Yeah, you don't have to inspect every one of them, just the ones you're using off campus.
I think that Dr. Munoz wants to inspect all of them. He ordered, when this came up, he ordered all of them parked until they were all street legal. And so they've all become street legal, I think, with mirrors and reflectors and everything else necessary. So they're ready to go, except with inspections.
But if he so chose next year not to do so, then he wouldn't have to inspect all 62 of them.
I'm sure he's going to want everyone to be inspected.
And counsel, I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of our staff, who is Maxwell Branham, who's joined us as the municipal court prosecutor, so we're very proud that he was able to work on this ordinance with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, counsel, we need some direction. Somebody take off.
I want to hear what Corby has to say.
Thank you. One of the things that I want you to remember when we drafted this ordinance is, as it's written, you know, when we started this process, we wanted it to be centralized around ASU. So I don't want you to, to just think about just ASU. The way it's written, if ASU is eligible to operate them, they can operate anywhere in the city. So that's why I wanted to change that, that speed limit sign, because I don't want them to be able to, just because it's on Johnson around the school, that's a 25 mile zone, doesn't mean they can go all the way to Johnson's to the stadium, because that's a 35. I think that's where, we don't want to be limited in scope. Yes, we want to allow this, and under your direction, we're going to, but there are certain parts of the city that we don't want them operating because it's not safe. When we started our meetings and starting drafting the ordinance, one of the things that I was asked, is there any streets that we don't want them to operate on? Well, of course there is. But to list them by name would take us forever. So limiting that to just the 30 mile an hour zones, I think will encompass all the intent that we want to do is to keep them off the major thoroughfares of Avenue Inn, Knickerbocker, Johnson's, all those, the ones that, they may be 35 mile zone, but we still don't want them operating on those roadways. So don't be limited in scope to thinking that we're just thinking about just Southland Arms, or just where UPS and the neighborhoods, or just ASU. That's, that's one of the things I want you to remember.
I have one more question.
Yes, Don.
Joe, have y'all ever had an, an accident where anyone was injured, since you've been using these in the '90s, that you know?
I've had one accident that happened in June of last year. I don't think, it wasn't a transport, if he didn't get transported to the hospital, but, I mean, he...
Well, Joe took me on a tour at one time, I almost fell out, but I caught myself, so I think that was a near one, but...
Also, what I'd, I'd like you to remember is, on the inspection, of course, I, I'd have no doubt that that's all going to fall on my shoulders, so that's not a big deal. But one of the things I want you to remember is, you know, whether exempt for somebody, every golf cart that's going to be operating has to have a sticker. That way, my guys or anybody that's going to be enforcing this ordinance can differentiate the ones that are legally out there and the ones that are not.
Right. Well, Joe, can't you get anywhere you need to, to go without driving on? You can drive on residential streets that's sturdy and get anywhere you need to go, can't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's not a problem driving on Johnson? Okay.
It's a cross.
It's a cross.
Just cross, yeah. Okay, well, that's, that was my question. You don't have to drive on Johnson. You can get where you're going without it.
I don't think...
So you can live with a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Just go in it.
I move that we accept the ordinance with the lowered 30 mile an hour speed, but leave everything else as written.
We're going to have to take the exemption out.
The, the age, well, how about, yeah, that's a hard one.
See, and, and along with that, the way it is now, as I read it, the, the entities, the governmental entities are exempt from the fee. I think that we need to have everybody pay the fee.
Yeah, we want to, yes, I, okay, let's, let me change that.
Start over again.
I, I move that we accept the ordinance, change the, take away the age limit, take it away, lower the speed limit down to 30, and everybody, no matter whether it's a government entity or just, just a small business, pays the $20 inspection fee yearly.
You, you want to keep the 18-year-old operator?
Everything else is the same, so you have to have a driver's license in there to, to operate it. But the, any passengers could be of any age. I think that fits with what ASU wants.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Do we have any further counsel discussion on this? Marty?
I guess, I guess I do have a question. I'm, after thinking, I'm, I support Rodney in the age. When we get below a certain age, they have to be buckled in on a, on a, and I, and I hate to muddy the water at this point, but should I just shut up?
But you just did.
Should we mirror state law?
Okay.
Should we mirror state law in this, as far as the height and the size of a child?
Are there seat belts on these carts?
That's my point. There is no provision in the state law that requires them to have seat belts, period.
Okay. Let's not do it.
Guess that question answered itself. Do we have comment from the public on this? This is your opportunity to weigh in. We have a motion that we accept the ordinance as written, but removing the exemption for government entities so that everyone pays, removing the, has to be 16 years old to ride. And what else did you do? The 30 mile an hour zone?
Yes.
Has to be driven on 30 mile an hour zone? Okay. That's been the motion. It's been seconded, and I'm calling for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six-oh on that, please.
Who seconded that?
Uh, Don.
Don.
Let's move back now to item number 10. Consideration of adopting documents as part of the 2009 Comprehensive Plan to Include Lake Nazworthy Sub-District Concept, Lake Nurse Nazworthy Master Plan Implementation Strategy. A.J. Favre, Gateway Planning Principal Scott Polikov.
Good morning, Mayor. Counsel. I'll bring Mr. Polikov up in a moment to give you a brief presentation, just to kind of remind you of where we've been and where we're going. We are coming to you with a final document. You might remember that we started this planning process back around May of last year, and throughout that process, you all have been very involved, and we thank you for your attendance at our public meetings and coming to speak with us on the, on the matter. We did go through a request for qualifications process for this back in 2012, had a selection committee that was made up of several different parties, including some representatives from including some representatives from the city, the city council at the time, Co-City C, our Parks consultant, Texas Outdoor Wildlife Consulting was part of that effort, and the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Association. This particular configuration of consultants was selected at that time, and we were under contract and kicked off the project in December of 2012. Since then, we've done a wide variety of public input, which Mr. Polikov will summarize for you. You all, again, have attended some of those. We've had some one-on-one meetings with particular stakeholder groups, we've had some group meetings, we've had some community meetings, that we've had some excellent attendance at, as far as community meetings go. So it's been a very beneficial process for all of us involved as well to get that public input. And the planned document that you had in your background packet, and which is also available on our website, we've had some people peruse that and call us with some questions and comments, is really a formulation of all of that public input. The document that you see today is very different from where we started, and I think it's a good indicator of the willingness of people in San Angelo to step up and give us some feedback on different things that they felt strongly about. And we did get a lot of that type of input. Running through the spring, we did, as I mentioned, have community breakfast, we had an evening meeting, we had some of those one-on-one meetings. We tried to identify every group that we could think of in the community that might have some stake in this effort, and we've had a lot of people that suggested other groups. And so Mr. Polikov can talk to you about the number of people that we've met with, but it's been pretty extensive. What we're looking for today, you might notice that we have a two-part caption. We are looking at two different products that were the result of the contract that we were under with Gateway. One of those products that we required them to provide us with is what we're calling a sub-district chapter. If you look through our 2009 comprehensive planning document, there are several sub-districts that are identified as being unique pieces of a community that needs special attention. The council, when putting this contract together, felt that this was a specific part of the community that needed special attention and had not been recognized until this point. So we do have that product ready for you. We also have under B a second product, and that is the master implementation strategy and planning document. That is the significantly thicker of the two documents, and we will not cover all of that for you today, but we have made that available to you and to staff members. We are available, if you have questions even after the meeting, about specific parts of that document. We're happy to go through that with you. As far as an approval process, we have been before the planning commission at their most recent meeting, reviewed this presentation with them, reviewed the process. They've also been involved since the beginning, and they unanimously recommended approval to the city council, so I do have that recommendation for you today. We also met with the Parks Commission. We were unable to get a quorum together, but we had three members that came and spent about two hours of time going through this with us, and they had some great comments, and also indicated that they were very supportive of the document as well. And so with that, I will bring up Mr. Polikov, our principal with Gateway Planning. He's going to go through, again, a brief overview of the two documents that we're bringing to you today. The caption is written in such a way that it allows you to take action, which would amend the current comprehensive plan by adding these two pieces. And so with that, I'll have him come forward.
Mr. Polikov.
Mayor, members of the council.
I'm going to give you five minutes.
Oh, you said 10 out there.
And if you're not through in five minutes, then I will ask the council if they will allow you another five minutes. So you could probably get 10 minutes. But you can talk on this for an hour, because I've been in two meetings where you have. So we're going to start with five, then you're going to ask the council for an extension of five, and then you're going to be through.
Yes, sir.
Fair enough, sir?
No, that's great.
Okay.
But I do want to say this is a good news story, and I want to declare victory with you. I think this deserves at least five minutes. This may be the most important issue before you today, and you've got a lot of issues before you. But the long-term preservation and opportunity with Lake Nazworthy is your gem and your jewel, and you've got a lot of important neighborhoods out there in business interest. And in that regard, we focused on the issue of linking both tourism and the neighborhoods, and I think we've met that balance. There were some concerns about redeveloping everywhere around the lake, and I'll show you a map in a sec that contains that, so that this is just a very focused set of opportunities. And that's all this is, is this is a recommendation and a pathway for opportunities. You're not committing to anything today. You're actually just putting the framework in place. You're telling the neighborhoods and the markets and the staff what their options are so that you can have rational discussions down the line when opportunities present themselves. In terms of the deliverables, the modification of the comprehensive plan and the thick planning documents you have before you has now been completed. What we would like is if you adopt the plan today, is we'll then work with your staff on potential zoning reforms, which I think is something you all desperately want, so that these cases, when they come before you, there's a better alignment in the regulatory environment with the desires of the neighborhoods and the developers proposing projects, and also a discussion about potential catalytic projects to bring in some opportunities that are referenced in the plan. In terms of public participation, we've met with virtually, everybody has an interest in the property, and in the lake, and in the neighborhoods. We think this plan reflects what the KOA folks like, what the business folks like, what Angela State wants, what the Air Force wants, what the property owners want. This reflects a lot of collaboration amongst your different staff members and your different departments, and I want to underscore how important this is. This gives your city staff the opportunity to collaborate across departments to prioritize asset preservation at the lake. That's something you didn't have before this piece of work was done. You had a lot of people working on a lot of different pieces of the lake. This gives the staff the ability to work together more efficiently and more effectively, in order for government to deliver what it does more efficiently, which I know is important to this council. Bottom line is that, as you can see from this map, we had scores and scores of people give us feedback, and I'm going to jump ahead. This presentation will be available for the web, Mayor. But, you know, one of the key quotes we had was, "We see a carefully planned public-private partnership that results in a functional blend of improved lake access and supporting infrastructure for residents, open space, green belts, and selectively approved economic development activities that do not negatively impact existing recreational activities." And I think that we have met that standard. Terms of the final outreach, we met with the public, we had the planning commission meeting, as A.J. said, the Parks Board meeting, and I believe, and I think you'll see Councilmember Fleming, I think, can attest to this. I think there's very strong broad support for this analysis and this project now. Bottom line is, there are some strong resource management issues out there in terms of erosion control and water issues. We see this as a parallel track. We don't think that those are all going to be resolved, but if you adopt this plan and encourage the proper investment in the lake, and you keep supporting the activity out there, much of which is nationally recognized now, you have tourists come to this region and spend money because of the lake, I think that'll even create a stronger constituency for getting at the tough issues of erosion control and lake management, and I think those are complementary opportunities. People have said, "Don't do anything else until we solve those problems." We think this plan supports a stronger constituency, so those problems can be solved. I'm not going to go through all the market analysis, this is all available to you. I'm going to jump forward to a specific map. This map, I think, clarifies some concerns. As you can see, the existing city parks are in the dark green. The existing residential neighborhoods are in the yellow, they're substantial. The only proposed mixed-use commercial development are in the two red locations, and they're actually already areas that have been developed, they just are in disrepair, the power plant area and the marina area. We are not proposing substantial development around the lake. Instead, what we're proposing around the lake are things like birding centers, and, for example, enhanced trail systems, and, for example, low-impact trailheads, and more bathrooms, and parking. Ninety percent of the improvements we're suggesting around the lake are just enhancing what's already there. And I wanted to reinforce that, and I think after we had the public meeting, and Mayor, I know you were there, and others, I think now that we were able to get that word out, I think the concerns by the neighborhoods that we're going to overwhelm them with commercial development has now been dealt with. And in fact, the locations where there is demand, I paid $300 for a hotel room last night, and there's extensive analysis in this document that reinforces that. Having a great resort hotel and destination and restaurants at the marina is just taking advantage of what's already there, and not asking to put any neighborhoods at risk because of development around the rest of the lake. I want to also focus on next steps. We do think that there are some opportunities that need to be facilitated, and we don't want to try and do everything that's in this plan. So one of the things we want to work with you and staff on going forward, and with the city attorney's office-
Counsel, may you have five more minutes?
I want him to keep talking.
Yes, five more.
All right, down here. Go ahead, sir.
I'll give you some time back. One of the things that we want to talk about are, what are those areas that you feel are important to move forward? Would you like to receive proposals for a resort hotel and enhance marina? Should we enhance the east side of the lake for a birding center? You know, we need to work with you on some priorities. And so, once you adopt this plan, hopefully today, we can work with the staff on those questions. And the other thing is, is that we want to move aggressively into the modification of the zoning standards, so that we don't have these conflicts anymore. When a proposed development comes forward, we want to make sure that you have the plan, and you have the tools on the books that are aligned, so that you can say to the marketplace and the development community and to the neighborhoods, "We know what we want, you have the tools to deliver the development that we want, and if what you're proposing doesn't align with the plan and doesn't align with the tools and the zoning ordinance, then we're not going to move forward with that project." And I think that gives you certainty of outcome, that gives the market certainty of outcome, which is important for financing projects, and most importantly, it gives the neighborhood a sense that they're not going to have to come down to council and fight every proposal, because you already have on the books the tools necessary to elevate the game of the developer and the applicant, to make sure that they're bringing forward only the projects that already make sense, that are reflected in this plan. I'm happy to give back the time and answer any questions. I know you have a very busy agenda. A.J. and Jeff are going to post this presentation on the website. It's already in PDF format. The plan is on the website. We've met with you individually and walked you through the details. This is a business plan for neighborhood preservation and long-term investment for particular locations that make sense, but most of all, I think it's the best balance of a regional destination and neighborhoods. And that's tough to do, but I think we accomplished that. Thank you, Mayor.
Rodney, this is in your area, yes, so I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Well, I've been for this, and I've gone to all the meetings, I've met with the lake residents out there, and I think the majority of them are for this. This is just a game plan. All of this is, is a very expensive game plan, but it is a game plan. It doesn't mean that we're going to put a hotel out there, and it doesn't mean that these things are going to happen. What we're doing is, we're saying where the spots are, he just said, where the spots that we, they could do this at. Now, if we do get some developers, and this could help us possibly find developers, because we are receptive to putting things there. So I'm totally in favor of this. I think we need, if we did, if we didn't accept this, that's the problem I'm going to have, because we've just paid $350,000 for a game plan that we are not going to accept. Well, we had all of our former council members that were on the board that accepted this company to put together our game plan. So they basically hired our coach, this is our coach, he's saying what to do, let's do it.
Do we need a motion on this?
We're allowed any public input?
Oh, yes. You get your opportunity.
I move that we accept the Gateway plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Would it be both the-
A and B?
A and B?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion, there is a second. Is there any further counsel discussion on this? Now, I'll open it up to the public.
Well-
State your name, and you've got three to five.
Before, I'm Lee Bell, farm ranching, High Plains of Texas, farming basin here. I have worked with all kinds of things. The thing I disagree with them mostly on is the public input. How this debacle got started was Mr. Paul Alexander, he wants to bring it forth. Well, we had three big meetings with Paul, and the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Residence, about spending $350,000 or $60,000, and we said not only no, but hell no. My gosh, that kind of money. I mean, now, the study, good, I liked their maps and stuff. Of course, I think we got them nearly all down at City Hall, we can get our maps, maybe that's where he got them, I don't know. But anyway, I don't have a big problem with the study. I think it's a pretty good study for about $35,000. Now, once you pay 10 times too much for it, well, yeah, I guess we need to improve it, that'd maybe make us not look too stupid. But sometimes I wonder, am I the only one that sees the elephant in the room? Here we have got this, but now, Paul, when he got ready to bring this down here to the city council, we have had three meetings, and we've been dead set against it, and he comes down and talks to the city council, which I don't think hardly any of y'all were on there, and he says, "Yeah, I've talked to the Lake Nazworthy homeowners." He didn't tell you. I mean, he acted like this debacle, he was, that we were all in favor of it. And I'll disagree with Rodney some, that I don't believe that everybody's saying this is wonderfully nice, and I'm sure it's probably going to get approved anyway, but there's a whole lot more people against this than you think. And one of our biggest things is our infrastructure, and I agree with them about, you know, working on existing things that are out there. I think that's one of the best things. But I think as far as getting your cart in front of your horse, you sure need to do that with the infrastructure before you start planning these other things or spending $350,000 on a study. One thing is, I would say this whole outfit depends on water. And we don't have any water. I mean, have y'all thought about putting a dirt track out there? I mean, that's maybe what we need, a dirt track, instead of something to do with the water. We don't have any water. Our invasive weeds, I've had a chemical license since I was, for the last 50 years. Going to these continuing education seminars that we have to go to, to maintain our chemical license. We have the invasive weeds, which are cedar, salt cedars, mosquitoes, prickly pear, and we haven't had them like this 50 years ago. We hadn't had them like this 25 years ago. They have covered up our waterways. If the good Lord continues to bless us with rain, we need some of that stuff looked into. We need a study on that, not a $350,000 study. Sound like Mr. Gateway representative want to have his hand still in our pocket to help us go along with this, when we may need to turn into, like I said, a dirt track or what out of there. But I'll leave y'all with this, is, like I said, just a whole bunch of this. I disagree with about 90% of what he said. I think he's got a pretty good study and a pretty good plan, but I leave you this. Where and how are we going to get the water? We need to work on our waterways, clearing them out. We need to see about a hole in South Pool. We are way far off from being anything like this. I would take this thing, I would table it, put it in a drawer, put a piece of tape on there, and say, "Take that back out and look at it when Twin Buttes is half full."
Appreciate your comments. And that was, that was a 6-1 vote when it was passed, because I voted against it, said the same thing you did.
And if you'll know that Mr. Paul Alexander's no longer here, and you vote against him, you're our mayor.
But, you know, it's still, it's still rule of law here, and it's four votes, four votes is what happens, so-
Well, I believe that if we had had the opportunity, see, Paul moved it up one day. We were all ready to come down here and voice our opposition to this, but he moved it up one way, and so he got it in there. It kind of stinks, kind of like a dead skunk in the middle.
We're not going to solve any problems in 213 if we still keep dealing with those in 211. Who else? State your name, you've got three to five.
Dathan Simpson. I'd like to thank Rodney for coming out and listening to the homeowners. And I think we need to approve the plan, but also, we need to put it on hold till we use some of the stormwater runoff fees to improve the area out there, take care of that runoff, and make those improvements that he also said need to coincide with.
Right.
They need to go first.
But, hold on one second. We need to prove the plan, though, just kind of to lay down the foundation, you know, and-
Right.
To Lee's comments, I would, I would have been with Duane on that $350,000 study. That was-
Way too much.
You know, no offense, I'm sorry, it's a beautiful study, but I just, I couldn't have made myself vote for something like that at all, and have a good conscience on that. But that being said, it's done.
It's a good plan.
It's paid, it's paid for, it's in place. It is a good plan. We do, we have, as a council and as a city, we do, we have to move forward. Lee did say one good thing in his comments there, the infrastructure is very, very important about what we got to get done, and what you're saying also. So we have to, you know, as our, as our city planners come into effect, they need to be telling the new developers, this is what you got to do and everything. And I have no fear that they're going to be doing those things.
They're going to look at, like I said, the stormwater runoff. I asked about that, because we have a problem with it coming through our yard. We got anywhere from a six-inch river to a foot deep, going between us and the neighbor after our boat slipped.
Yeah.
And I have a stormwater runoff, and he says, "Well, we can't do it for flood control." And I'm saying, "It's runoff control."
Right.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Ray Van Stockham. I've been a practicing attorney for a number of years. I was a judge, state court judge, for 27 years. I retired here to San Angelo by choice. I went out to the lake when I first came here in 1994 and just fell in love with it, and leased a lot at that time, and the first time he let us buy them, I bought it. And I built a home out there in 2005, and we love living out of the lake. I want to preserve that. This study does that. I urge you to approve the study. It gives us, it gives you the tools you need to say no to a developer that wants to put the strip club out there someplace, or the big bar in a certain area. We've got home, a lot of people have invested a lot of money out there, they're retired out there, and they'd like to keep their homes nice, and the neighborhoods nice, and this will do that, and I really urge your approval on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And it is just a plan. Nothing is set in concrete. This is a plan, it's a guideline. We need to remember that. Any other comment from the floor? Come up, Ted. State your name, you've got three to five, sir.
I'm Ted Logan, president of the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Association. And I am, I'm also, of course, at the planning meeting, I was sitting here going, "Well, I want this approved, but not implemented." And I've kind of concerned, I've changed my mind. Basically, we've got to implement this thing before we can start working on capitalization of the plan as it is. We, as homeowners out there, are greatly concerned about the stormwater runoff, the problems we've got with existing shorelines, the water quality, and if we're going to even have a lake. And, of course, these need to be the primary issues looked at, but they're not going to be looked at until we implement a plan, so that we've got areas where certain things can happen, certain things can't happen. We understand that, and we do want you all to go ahead and get this plan in the, in the works, so that we can set up 20 and 30 year plans for continued maintenance, or whatever we need at this lake. But it is a gem. We've all got vested interest out there now. There's a lot of us, and we want to see the water quality maintained. We also want to see water there. That's the main thing. At some point, when we figure out what Hickory is going to do, we'd like to see that, hopefully, you know, there's some implementation to keep this lake full, or to some level, because Twin Buttes might not exist again. So what are we going to do if that alternative has to be faced? I think that's something that we've got to really look at in the next 12 months. But anyway, thank you all, and we do like, would prefer implementation.
Well said, Ted. Anyone else from the public care to speak to this? Come up, Bill. State your name, you've got three to five, sir.
Okay. Bill Richardson, I believe this should be approved. And I think the cost, maybe a lot of people don't realize the amount that it will cost to do the research that went into this plan, the compilation- that went into this plan, the compilation, to gather all the information and put it together in a, in a plan and write it all up and, and put up the maps and the different charts and displays that Gateway Planning Group has put together. I think they've done a really good job and I think this would be really good for the city and for the area.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add, I too agree with this plan. I voted for this plan years ago, you know, however many years it's been. And the bottom line was for them to bring us something, an idea of what to do with the Lake Nazworthy area. Thinking about those folks out there, thinking about the city as a whole, to bring more tourism out there, you know? That was the bottom line. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars later, was it too much? Yeah, some, some would argue it is. Some would argue that nine million dollars we spent on the Contra River was too much or the fifteen million dollars on the City Hall was too much. But it needed to be done, you know? And I think it's just a, you know, it's just a feather in our hat that we're trying to revitalize the city. I am pro-Lake Nazworthy. I've always wanted more people from out of town to come and spend their money and go boating and buy gasoline and go to restaurants, which benefits us. So was it too much? It, it could have been, you know? It was, it's a fantastic plan, it's an idea, it's a, like they're saying, it's bringing us something to the table for us to, to run with. So I appreciate Gateway and Rodney, thank you for supporting it and, and move on from there. And see, we can just better equip ourselves for, for that area. That was, that was the bottom line.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other comment from the public? Any further comment from the council? Then we have got a, we've got a motion on the floor that says we approve both A and B as presented. We have a second. Call for the vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six oh on that. Thank you very much. Let's move on now to item number eleven, which is the first public hearing and can, no, that's the one we pulled. That one's gone, never mind. I'm going to put it back on the consent agenda where I've been trying to put it before. That one has been pulled, number eleven has been tabled. So we'll move to number twelve. First public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinance City of San Angelo, Z thirteen thirty-six SAS Texas Properties LLC and ordinance amending chapter two, exhibit A of the Code of Ordinance City of San Angelo, Texas, which said exhibit A of chapter twelve adopts zoning regulations used districts and the zoning map in accordance with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit. An unaddressed tract located approximately eight hundred feet south from the intersection of Humble Road and North Bryant Boulevard. Property specifically occupies the Lakeside Gardens Edition Block One, lots twenty-eight through thirty-one in northwestern San Angelo. Changing the zoning classification from heavy commercial CH to general commercial CG district, providing for severability and providing a penalty. Mr. Hines, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, before Jeff starts, I wanted to, just, we recently received a notice and he'll be leaving us in a couple of weeks. I want to thank Jeff, I think he's done a great job for the city and we appreciate all the, the work he's put into it. You've seen his presentations. And I, I think we've, we've been very blessed to have him on board with us and we wish him the best in his future endeavors. And thank you Jeff for all you've done for us.
You have.
You guys didn't do anything wrong, you're cool. No, I just, I took an opportunity to move back my family in the Midwest, so you guys are fine. I like it, I'll come back and visit.
Well, I thought you were joining the Dallas Cowboys, no?
Yeah, no, unfortunately they cut me. But we sent.
You have maturity and you've done it, you've done very well Jeff.
Thank you.
I compliment you, sir.
Good job. Thank you. We sent nineteen notifications for this particular request. I know time is of a, somewhat of the essence here, so I'll try to get through all these before lunch here for you. This is the subject property here. Here's a map of the notices that we did receive, the one in favor and one in opposition. The property is somewhere near Lake Drive, Humble Road. Twenty-ninth Street is much further south on the property. The aerial photo is a much better depiction. The circle at the end of Aaron Street is probably the most, the closest residential existing at this time. Currently, the property is vacant. A billboard sits just north of the self-service warehouses on this particular, on the particular property to the south. It is zoned heavy commercial and I'll get into why, you know, it'd be good to change that. This is the vision plan map for the area. The majority of the parcel is indeed calling for commercial development with a small remainder in the back calling for neighborhood. It's inaccessible at this time, so we would urge the council and planning commission took this action as well to zone the property, you know, one, one zoning designation to avoid confusion into the future. Just some aerial photos looking west from the property of the golf course, looking north on Highway eighty-seven from the right of way heading out of town. And then south from Highway eighty-seven on that right of way looking back in town towards the Walmart. You may approve this, remand it back to the planning commission or deny the zone change. Staff did recommend approving this and the planning commission recommended unanimous approval at the October meeting as well. And I can get into it further if there's any questions.
What, what was the, the objection that the opponent had?
They'd written about just development of the property in general somewhat. There was just, you know, anything happening there. But if you left it the way that it is, kind of from the staff perspective, heavy commercial allows for open storage, junkyards and things of that nature that general commercial would not allow for.
So we're actually lessening.
Yeah, you're lessening the zoning, it'll be much better on the neighborhood.
Marty, this is in your area, you take it, sir.
The, he, he, he was opposed to it because of looking back into that area. Do, do we, do we require the, the owner of the property to do anything for? I know in the past there's been fences built and stuff to, if, if that area becomes unsightly, do?
Code would work any unsightly kind of junk violations. A privacy fence is required. It's, you know, not much, there's a ten-foot separation required for any of the buildings that would abut the residential zoning there. But generally speaking, the general commercial allows for much lesser intensity uses and, you know, better things like retail that would be much more beneficial to the neighborhood than the heavy commercial zoning would allow for.
Okay. And, and I guess my other question was, they, at one time, there was a request for, for an RV park or?
Correct. This is a different group. The RV park was tabled by the planning commission and never reached council. This is, the property is transacted as a result of that falling through. They indicated on their application to us, they're looking to do retail, sales and service on this property.
Okay. All right. I, I, I think it would be a benefit to the area, I move approval.
Second. Okay, we do have a motion to approve as, as presented with a second. Do I have further counsel consideration on this? Open it up to the public. This is your opportunity if you want to speak either for it or against it. Well Johnny's not here, let's take a vote. If it's a tie, we'll wait till he gets back and do it again. We have a motion on the floor to accept it. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a five oh on it. All right, Jeff, we've got the next one. Will be item number thirteen, which is, did you say aye?
I said aye.
Put a six oh on the pen. First public hearing, number thirteen, in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A, zoning ordinance city of ordinance city of San Angelo, Z thirteen thirty-four, the River San Angelo Church, Inc. An ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A of the Code of Ordinance City of San Angelo, which said exhibit A of chapter twelve adopts zoning regulations used districts and the zoning map in accordance with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit. Fifty-fifty Lake Drive located approximately eight hundred feet southwest of the intersection of North Chadburn and Lake Drive, more specifically occupying the Juliet Bailey subdivision, being four point three eight four acres out of the south part of block eight, lot two in northwest San Angelo. Changing the zoning classifications from ranch and estate RNE and general commercial, heavy commercial CJCH to general commercial CG district, providing for severability, providing a penalty. Mr. Hines?
We'd sent eleven notices for this particular request. One was returned in favor, none were opposed. This is in the similar area of town again, so that's kind of the theme for today. Whoever's district that is, I guess I'm picking on you, sorry. But generally speaking, this is the property here. North Chadburn Street runs just north of the property, Lake Drive is to the west of the property. The property is highlighted here. This line across the map indicates the portions that are currently zoned commercial. That was done in the fifties and sixties when a three hundred foot strip on either side of Chadburn was designated the CGCH zone. And the rest of it has remained ranch and estate since the city first adopted zoning regulations in nineteen fifty-four. An aerial, the photo, it's currently, has a church on the property. There is a, the vision plan is calling for a neighborhood center and commercial development on this particular property. Here's a notice, where the notice in favor had come from was right across the street of the property. There's some aerial photos looking north, looking south on Lake Drive and then looking east at the subject property. At one time, there was a church there and it may still be, you know, going on at this time. Essentially, the applicant had come to staff and requested the zone change to go ahead and, you know, potentially sell the property to someone else. Without the zone change essentially, it has to revert back to the ranch and estate zoning, so the building would have to be used as a house without this zone change. So they're looking for some flexibility. They'd come in and requested heavy commercial at first, but after meeting with staff, decided general commercial would be a much better fit for the area and we'd concurred. I can go into this further if you'd like, if you have any questions.
Marty, this is yours.
So, so the church is going away and we're just, because it, the original permit was tied to it being a church, correct?
Correct, that's how it got to be, that's how it got to be a non-residential use. The churches require conditional uses in residential zoning districts, so that's how it got to be there at this time. And then they'd indicated to us, they're looking to do something different or sell the property potentially, so they wanted to get it zoned commercially for a little more flexibility.
Okay. I move approval.
Second. And you had no opposition to this from the neighborhood?
There's no opposition, no, none that was received in writing. There were some folks that came to speak at the planning commission, the minute record was in the background report, but they had worked out all that general commercial seemed to be amenable to everyone. There was this concern about kind of oil field and those types of businesses being on this tract and the general commercial wouldn't allow for that type of use.
Okay. Any further counsel consideration, Johnny?
There were, within the two hundred yard radius, there were folks there, right?
Correct.
Man, I'm looking at one map that doesn't show anything, but.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of houses in this area, then a residence here, then more of a retail establishment in this area.
Do we have comment from the public? This is your opportunity. If not, we have a motion to approve as presented with a second. And I will ask all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a seven oh on that one. Number fourteen. Six oh, yeah, no seven. Six oh. First public hearing, consideration of introducing an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a complete, unimproved sixty-foot wide public right-of-way for Nelson Avenue extending north for a distance of four eighty-five feet from Era, east of block three, lots eight through thirteen of the Goodfellow Court Annex and immediately west to property outside the city limits end. An abandonment of a complete thirteen-foot wide right-of-way for an alley extending west of Nelson Avenue and directly north of the Goodfellow Court Annex Block Three and adjacent to the entire northern length of block eight of the same subdivision east in San, any San Angelo. An ordinance providing for the abandonment, closing of the following unimproved street segment, unimproved alley segment to wit. A complete, unimproved sixty-foot wide public right-of-way for Nelson Avenue extending north for a distance of four eighty-five from Era Street, east of block three, lots eight through thirteen of Goodfellow Court Annex and immediately west to property outside of the city limits end. An abandonment of a complete thirteen-foot wide right-of-way for an alley extending west of Nelson Avenue and directly north of the Goodfellow Court Annex Block Three and adjacent to the entire northern length of block eight of same subdivision east San Angelo. Authorizing the conveyance therefore thereof to the abutting property owners, providing for the terms and conditions of abandonment and conveyance and providing for the mayor to execute and deliver a quick kind deed to the abutting property owners. Mr. Hines?
We'd sent thirteen notices for this. One was received in favor and we did receive one in opposition recently after the packet went out. So I'll share that with you now, so the slide is slightly wrong. The one in opposition, there may be a little confusion with the request and it was sent out and I'll elaborate on that a little bit further. But this is at the fur, the far eastern segment of the city. Here's the Goodfellow Court Annex Block Three. It's an alleyway to the north of lot eight, but, and then the, the right-of-way for Nelson Avenue just west of the city limit line at this time. Essentially, it's an unimproved right-of-way. As a, as a result of this request, the applicant has indicated they'd like to, you know, close this right-of-way and put some type of house out there. It's zoned residentially at this time. They think that the property would be better used as part of their private property. Given the current status and the lack of improvement of Nelson Avenue, staff would tend to agree with that. The vision plan is calling for a neighborhood in this area and here's a notice of the one that had received in opposition or in favor. And you have the opposition on us, so if you look at the number for that, I forget what it was, but you'll be able to figure where that, figure out where that was on the map here. But essentially, here's where that right-of-way is. It's, unless you have a truck, it's probably not advisable to drive down it. You can see, looking south from it, it is a neighborhood at this time. And then the property in the county at this time outside of the city limits. Also received notice, they do own some property within the city limits and did not object to this. They still do have access to the property even as a result of, if you were to recommend approving this. The planning commission recommended approval of this and I can go into it further if you'd like.
Johnny, is this yours or is this yours Rodney?
It's not mine.
It's mine.
It's yours, gone, okay.
And I'll move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further counsel?
I just have a.
We would ask that you adopt these conditions so that we don't create lots that don't have access to an approved right-of-way. They replat all the property into one lot so it accesses off of Era Street. And then stormwater is indicated an easement for water conveyance to, they would be required as well. We'd ask you to adopt those conditions with it as well.
Would you add that?
Yes. So I move.
Will you second that, Sam?
I'll second that again.
Any further counsel consideration, Johnny?
I just wonder what that red line meant that kept on popping up in every slide. There's that red line east.
This one right here?
I didn't think it wa, is that city limits?
Yeah, the city limit line is right there.
Wow, I thought it.
We can go back a little further. But yeah, it is the city limit line. There's a little kind of hole in the city here where it is not incorporated at this time and this is on the edge of that.
Okay.
Further comment from counsel? Have any comment from the public on this? Anyone wish to speak either for or against it? This is your opportunity. If not, I have a motion on the floor that we accept this as it has been presented, it has been seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a six oh on that one. Number fifteen, consideration and possible approval of a recommendation by the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, Costa DC, to amend Costa DC FY two fourteen budget by reducing account number four one oh five eight oh, travel and lodging from eighteen thousand to ten thousand and increasing account four one five three one oh, city services by ten thousand dollars to address the cost of public information office staff services provided to Costa DC as approved by council in August of two twelve. Brett Steeman, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, good morning. Take me just a second here to get the slide up. We can do this either item by item or we can hit the items that were changed. I'll leave it up to counsel. However y'all would like to do it.
We'd just like to talk about the items that they changed.
Okay. First of all, account number four ten five eighty, admin and travel, admin, travel and lodging, which is basically an expense in support of training or off, off-site training. We had a budget originally of eighteen thousand. That's been the budget for that item for a number of years. We looked at what we spent last year and I think we spent about seventy-eight hundred, eight thousand, something like that on it. So the board decided we would reduce that one from the eighteen thousand down to ten thousand. And counsel may recall, there were a number of items that, that you asked us to take a look at. That one, they, they agreed to reduce by eight thousand dollars. Under the city services contract, this was the increase. A little over a year ago, in August of two thousand and twelve, council, and this was the previous council, approved adding ten thousand dollars to the staff services contract to cover the cost of the public information office staff having to cover Costa DC meetings, providing us with CDs so that we could prepare our minutes and what have you. And so I hadn't added that to the budget at the time that I brought this to you before. The budget office pointed out to me that we needed to add this in and so we've added that ten thousand dollars to it and the board approved it. And this is just to, this is a reimbursement to the general fund for the cost of public information office. It has nothing to do with the public information office budget itself. And that was, everything else, the board looked at and felt comfortable with the budget as we had it. So those are the two items we're proposing.
Mr. Wardlaw, do you like to take this one, sir?
Yes, sir. The mayor directed you to take this budget back and scrub it and cut some stuff out of it. And here it comes back more bloated than ever. I'm, I'm distressed about that.
Your microphone, sir.
Your instructions were to cut this budget, not bring it back with more expenditures than were there. And I can see lots of things that could be cut out of there.
And again, as I said, I, I took all of those items to the Costa DC board.
Yeah.
We discussed them one on one, one, or I'm sorry, individually, one at a time. And this is what, these are the changes that they came back with.
Well, this is disappointing at the very least and I've got several that I'd be willing to take a shot at cutting out. I don't know if anybody else around here, other than, than me and the mayor like to cut, but there's some items that could come out of there for sure. Out of a several million dollar budget.
Would you like to remand this back to Costa DC and let them take another shot at it?
Yes, I would and I'll give them some suggestions of my own again.
I think that, may I, may I add something? I know that COSA DC and the COSA board themselves are very, I mean, I think they're very in tune with what's going on within this budget. And they have a pretty good understanding of what those needs are within that department. It may be something at this point that, I know if it goes back to them, as far as the discussion that they had and looking at these numbers, they felt very strongly that these were actual numbers that were absolutely needed in the budget?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so remanding and sending it back at this point, basically, we're saying, well, we don't agree with what you've guys have sent back to us. We want you to trim it at this point. Is there anything specifically that you are aware of that you would like to give instruction on to trim off this budget term? Is there something inside, something that you know that perhaps they don't know? Okay.
You want to hear them right now?
That'd be nice, that way they'd have some good direction.
Either that, or we can, we can vote as to whether we want to remand it. And if we get the votes, then we can remand it back with suggestions, or we can, if we don't get the votes, somebody can make the motion to accept it as is, so. You want to make a mo... If you want to make a motion, I'll second it, to remand, and let's take a vote and see what people say.
Yes, I'll make a motion to remand this for future work and to follow the instructions of this council, which were to cut the budgets some more.
I'll second it. Any, I guess now we can take a vote. If we get a vote to remand it, then it will be remanded, at which time Mr. Wardlaw can tell them what his suggestions are. And if we can't get the vote, then I'll accept another motion to accept it as presented. So let's take a vote on it. Johnny?
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wardlaw, did you not share with them the changes you wanted to make the first time? I mean, they brought it to us once. I don't remember, I've slept since then, so do you remember? Did you?
I did to my appointee, Johnny.
Okay, all right, that's what I want to know. So they knew, they knew.
Yes, sir.
Well, if he, if he...
If you shared it with them?
He transmitted that information, and I think he probably did, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
He, my representative was not aware that they voted the last time to increase the budget $10,000 for the public information officer. He said they might have, but he didn't, he looked at his notes and the information furnished, and he didn't recall that it was even up for a vote.
Let's take a vote on this. All those in favor of remanding it, please say aye. Aye. See if I raise my hands. One, two, three, four, five. That's a five-one vote to remand it. Winky, would you get with Mr. Sneeman, tell him what you want him to look at specifically, and let him discuss it again and bring it back?
Yes, sir.
I think we can deal with it like that, all right, Bob?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. It is 11:58, and we are, we don't want to deal with this next one right now, because we never would get out of here for lunch. So I think it's time that we go to executive. We have three items that we need to deal with in executive, and then we will come back, and we will start with number 16, with the discussion of solid waste. Let me read this, executive session, is that all right with everyone?
Yes, sir.
Executive session under the Division of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements that Meetings Be Opened Under the Following Sections. Section 551072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property regarding retroey edition, special recreational leases like Nazworthy. Section 551074A1, to deliberate the appointment and employment of the Emergency Operations Coordinator's position. Section 551074A1, to deliberate the appointment and employment of the Economic Development Director's position. How long do you think this is going to take, chief?
We have those three items. I don't give it any more than maybe...
An hour? Maybe an hour and a half, the most.
Can we, do you think that we can say that we will be back at 1:30?
Definitely.
Is that all right with everyone? Okay, let's just say that this executive will take an hour and a half, and we will be back at 1:30 to take up the next item, which is 16. And it is 11:59, and we have just gone to executive. And we said we'd be back at 1:30. So if everyone's ready, let's resume our meeting. But before we start, I want to introduce some very special guests in the audience today. I want all of you third graders from Fort Concho to stand up and do like that. They're studying city government, and so they came down to watch how we do things. So you, you boys believe yourself.
Mr. Mayor?
Bob, we're welcome to have you here, and just glad you're here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I tell them that I, too, graduated from Fort Concho Elementary? I'm a pioneer!
You got an alumni here.
And they've got the best principal in the district, Lori Barton, right there. Thank you, Lori, for all you're doing.
And I only spent three years in the third grade, so it was, that was a fun grade. Let's move on now, we are to number 17. This is the first public hearing, and can... No, let's not. Let's go to 16. We've already done... Man, I have had real trouble with this agenda.
16.
16. On the regular agenda. Number 16, discussion and possible action related to solid waste collection and landfill management. Mr. Kelton, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Got a couple of different parts here. We want to kind of visit with y'all a little bit on the collections as we're looking at coming up with either renegotiated contract or an RFP process to look at the collections and landfill management contract that we have. As we move forward, we just, I'm going to give you a brief update of kind of where we are and what we've been doing, and then get y'all's guidance on what y'all would like to see, and we'll move through it from there. And yes or no is fine, if that's all y'all want to do, that's good. All right. Currently, for the collections and disposals, currently Republic Waste Services is contracted to provide services for both the collections, disposal, and for the landfill operations. Our current contract with them, the first initial 10-year term is up July 31 of 2014. Current services that they provide right now for collections is manual collections in the alleys or in the streets, depending on where it is, house-to-house, and picking up individual trash cans and dumping them into the, into the rear loaders, except for where y'all have seen the pilot program that Republic Services has initiated with the cart programs. On the commercial side, we do have a once-a-week minimum pickup on the two-yard to six-yard containers, the, for the commercial side. And then they offer roll-off services. And currently, we do not have a recycling service that we provide through a contractor. As far as the landfill operations, Republic Services is contracted to run our landfill. They take care of all the daily operations out there and maintain it in compliance with our permit through the TCQ. All right, next. What we're looking for directions on as we move forward to kind of get y'all's ideas of what y'all would like to see from a collection service standpoint, what y'all would, where y'all see the city as we move forward. Types of collections that we want to look at, as far as garbage collection, as far as residential, is manual versus automated system. And when I talk automated, I mean the cart system, like that Republic has done in the pilot studies that they've, they've conducted around town. Want to, want to get y'all's opinion on that. And it'd probably be best for us if we just kind of take these one at a time, and y'all give me your opinion on what y'all would like to see. So with that, we can kind of, automated versus manual, what are y'all's feelings? And, or cart, let me, not automated, let's put cart system, let's say cart system, so.
I don't have any problem with the cart system, and really, I think that is what the future's going to hold. I don't know how much longer we're going to be able to hire men to drive right on the back of a truck. But again, that's something that can be negotiated. How's the rest of counsel feel about this?
I love the, I love the cart system. I mean, I think, it is up to me, and I've said this before, that, you know, I, I could do with a, and we hadn't gone there yet, I can do with a once-a-week pickup, but that's just two people in my house. I imagine there's other family with more individuals in the family, like Glenn Morrison and all his 20 grandkids, whatever. But, you know, they would do twice a week, but again, carts are fine. I, I really do like it.
Rodney, how you feeling on this?
Carts, that's the future, and that's pretty much where it's going nationwide. And I think we might as well go ahead and start turning that, that direction, for sure.
Marty?
I'm not a proponent of the carts, but I know it's going that way, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Don?
Carts, I think, I know C's got bulk trash collection down there. I think those two definitely need to be coupled together as far as getting some couches and those sort of things. We can talk to that, we can get down there.
Mr. Wardlaw?
We have a pilot program over there in Santa Rita, and I've not heard anybody that was dissatisfied with it. So I believe the carts will be fine.
Carts, okay.
And I think Don brought, brought up a good point there.
On the, on the bulk collections?
Yes, we've got, we've got a situation right now that probably is not duplicatable, because it, it's the best of both worlds, but I just don't see it continuing. But if we could have, maybe a run every month or something to pick up the big stuff with the carts, I believe the people would buy into it, so that's kind of, kind of where I am on it.
We, and we'll, I'll definitely, when we get down and we start, and we discuss bulk trash collection, I'll definitely have a recommendation that I would like to throw out for y'all, and then let y'all give me some feedback on, so.
Very good.
So with that being said, talk about recycling just a minute. There's been a lot of talk around town, I know counsel's visited with me, others, other individuals around town have visited with me about it. And looking at more of a recycling program utilizing the cart system at the homes in more of a single-stream type recycling versus area recycling stations. I know other communities have those, where they set up stations around the community where people go and drop off the recycling versus the single-stream at the residence recycling. The feedback that I've received from most citizens that I've talked to and visited with, or have talked to me, would prefer the single-stream recycling, but currently, we do not have a recycling program. So I guess first off, is a recycling program something that y'all would like to see implemented as we move forward in this?
Rodney, you'll start us off?
Yes, definitely. I know that all of us have gotten a lot of letters in the last two weeks, and I'm definitely for the recycling. I know that we'll probably have to phase that in, and I've talked to both the companies that are, that are present here today, and I know that it's going to be a big investment for them to put in the, what is it called, the MRF?
Murph.
Murph, put in the Murph, it's going to be a million dollars plus, and so it's going to take some time. So I'd like to tell all of the residents here out there that this is not something that's going to happen January 1st. This could be a thing that might be, take one, two, or even three years. But I think, my opinion is that we should start moving towards that.
Mr. Self?
Well, my wife said, "Don't come home without recycling." I know who runs my household, so I would say I would vote in favor of recycling.
Mr. Silvers?
I think, you know, like...
Who said it, Marty?
Marty said it. Or Rodney said it, that a lot of communities are going, or if not, they're already recycling. So I think if it's, if it helps add to the life of our landfill, I mean, that's a no-brainer, you know? I think, like he said, that it may take a couple of years to get there, but I think we will head in that direction. You know, we've got to.
Yes.
Mr. Vardeman?
I think recycling is good. Now, I, I don't know about, due to the amount of money it would take initially to go single-stream. You know, maybe we can take baby steps, get some of the area designated places to drop off your recycling, see how, how successful it is, how well it works, and then, then eventually move into single-stream. But, you know, I know a lot of people are for recycling, but I'm not sure how excited they're going to be with how much it's going to cost, so.
Mr. Wardlaw?
I agree with Don Vardeman completely. I'm concerned about the cost, and I think the citizens rejected it a couple of years ago based on the cost, so I'm not willing to jump in with both feet right now, if it's up to me.
And I, I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to say, of course, that when you look at the cart system, you know, and Johnny just mentioned a while ago, as far as doing the once-a-week or twice-a-week, we can make adjustments based on if we do have the single-stream recycling, you know, if we can go to once-a-week on the cart and actually kind of reduce costs that way. So there's some options available also, but I do, I'm glad that Mr. Wardlaw mentioned that a while ago, because there's going to be a cost associated with it.
And I'm glad to see us talking about this, because I also have had some interest in the recycling. But as Don said, I don't know that the people are going to be as interested when they see what the cost, the price tag's going to be. So I would like to see a, I would like to see a price for just trash pickup, and I would like to see a price for trash pickup and recycling. And when we start getting some bids together, then we'll, we'll be able to, as a council and as a community, to make a decision. I'd love to have it, but...
And there's lots, and there's lots of ways to negotiate through these things to ensure that we keep the prices at a reasonable rate.
And I think that's the biggest concern right here, is to get the service, the service that the community wants at a price that they can afford to pay.
Okay. And then, sounds like we're, we're kind of all in consensus there, so we'll move on to the commercial side. And right now, and I guess the biggest thing on the commercial side is, I've had, you know, lots of complaints, and it's been through even the council from over times, is that on the commercial side of things, we just have a minimum once-a-week pickup right now. And we do get a lot of complaints about overflowing dumpsters and all over town, and people not calling for their extra pickup. I guess right now, do we want to leave it at a minimum once-a-week pickup? Or would we like to see that a minimum go to twice-a-week? How would y'all like to, or do y'all have any other ideas that y'all would like to see? Maybe to give us some direction on how y'all want to handle the commercial side of things as far as trying to help alleviate some of these overflowing dumpsters around town and the trash flying everywhere. You know, that y'all have brought those concerns to us several times over the years.
Mr. Wardlaw, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes, I have the fortune or misfortune to have a bunch of commercial dumpsters, and they do occasionally overflow, but I do not want to double my cost in, in, in having twice-a-week pickup.
Mr. Vardeman?
I, I agree with that also. I would like for, for whoever gets this deal is to factor in an additional pickup if somebody's remodeling or getting in extra merchandise for holidays or whatever, so it would, wouldn't just kill them to have two or three extra pickups a year, a week, a month, something like that.
Currently, we do have, in our structure, that we do have a pricing structure for a second pickup or third pickup or fourth pickup. It's just, I think that we've, we've run into it every year, well, every time it's been brought up, that people are just, you know, they just, if they can get by with it, they will, and they won't call for the extra pickup, so. Because it does cost extra money, so, and there's no way around it, so.
Mr. Silvers?
Shane, I'm just curious at the frequency of the calls that either Robert Surles or Kenny, or if you want to answer it, but, you know, if the, and we don't know, I don't know, the commercial people out there, are they having to call in one, at least once a month for an extra pickup? Do you have any idea where we are on that? Are you saying you got...
Well, I mean, I get calls of blowing trash and things like that. We go out, or code enforcement will go out, and they will take a look at the dumpsters, and they'll be overflowing. And I, and I'm not sure that people are, you know, they're not calling in when they should be for the extra dump. So once they fill them up and they start overflowing, I think that's the biggest issue, is people just aren't calling in for that extra service to come out.
Mr. Self?
How many calls do y'all get, guys?
Just a handful a week of, of extra pickups on the commercial side.
And I go, I guess part of that is the, the part of the growing pains that we're going through as a community, you know, just all over town, you know? You know, more business coming to town, so.
Yeah.
I'm good with once, once a week.
Mr. Fleming?
I don't want to really increase that or force that on, especially the small business owner, and that's who it's going to affect more than anybody. It's going to be the small businesses that if we say you're going to go from one to two, and we're, I don't know if it's going to be a double of their fee, but it's going to be a big increase of their fee, so I think just one is good.
Keep it at one.
Yeah, I'd say we leave it like it is.
Daniel?
I'm good with that, absolutely.
If we're not having more than a handful of calls for a second pickup a week, I don't see it as a big problem, so.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, let's talk about bulk trash collection. You know, if, if we're going to go to the cart system, people are going to have chairs and some couches and some branches and three things that won't fit in the cart. I, we, we've seen other communities and visited with other communities, heard horror stories from Republic and, and everybody else about people on bulk trash collection doing it once a month or trying to do it too often. And, and the problem with doing it too often is, as soon as the trash trucks come by, the people are throwing it right back out on the curb again to get ready for the next load. people are throwing it right back out on the curb again to get ready for the next load. Every thing that, other cities that we've talked to and visited with and visiting with Republic Services, from what they've seen and their experiences that they've had, is either doing it at a maximum of once a quarter and probably preferable twice a year on a bulk collection system. That way, the people will, you know, they know it's coming in six months or it's coming in three months, and they don't just go throw it out on their curb and trash up the, trash up the curbside, so. That would, you know, our recommendation would be either two times a year or four times a year, once a quarter at the maximum would be our recommendation on that. Want to get y'all's feedback on that as well. But, you know, and one thing too, and we'll talk about it here in just a second, is the Citizens Free Dumping Program, that kind of could tie into that a little bit as well too, so.
Mr. Wardlaw?
Twice a year?
Both. I'd rather have too much than not enough. I'd rather see four, but, you know, once again, it depends on the cost. If it's affordable, twice would be fine. I know as far as the free dumping, all that's well and good, but we have a lot of senior citizens that aren't able to go to those and don't have a pickup or trailer or whatever it takes also, even if they were able to pick it up. So I think we definitely need to do something dovetailing in with that perhaps.
Okay. Mr. Silvers?
I'm kind of leaning towards maybe once a quarter, but like you're saying, maybe give the citizens a heads up, hey, we're going to do it on this day or this week, so it's not to have, you know, the trash piled. I've seen that happen in Austin where, yeah, it sat there for a week or so, and it does look bad, but you knew it was coming, because I think every house that was on the road that I saw, they had that bulk built up, you know? So I think if you're giving them a heads up of what day, I'm okay with once a quarter. That's just me.
How does Mrs. Self feel about this, Marty?
Well, she didn't instruct me on this one, but I'm more in support of once a quarter, I think.
Mr. Fleming?
Definitely once a quarter, definitely once a quarter.
Okay. I don't want to see them on 50th, I don't want to see these old couches and chairs and mattresses on 50th Street, and if we don't pick up enough, that's where they're going to end up. So I would like to see at least four times a year, maybe six times a year, every other month, but that's something that can be negotiated.
Okay.
Daniel?
The only comment I have is just to reiterate what Shane just said a while ago. I know a previous city that I was at in Eagle Pass, we're actually doing it on a monthly basis, and it just seemed like there was always junk out there. No matter what, we want to clean up those neighborhoods, so I'd even be absolutely open to just twice a year. I think people, citizens get accustomed to the idea that during spring or during fall, we'll announce it, you know, when we're going to be out there to pick up the bulk trash, people get used to that too. So I don't have an issue really with twice a year either, so, you know, that's my input.
Johnny?
Shane, remind me, are we still doing the free, what'd you call it?
The Citizens Free Dumping Program? Yes, we do have that budgeted in every year, and of course, it's free to the citizens. Of course, that's something that we pay for, the city pays for it, but...
With a copy of my water bill, that's the one you're talking about, I can go up to the landfill and...
Yes, you take your current water bill out there with a load.
So how often, is that a once a month type of thing?
Once a month, you can do it once a month, yes.
Mayor? Yes, sir.
Shane, are you going to come back to free dumping and where we leave things at the landfill? Is that a topic farther down your list? Okay.
What's the bulk trash pickup now situation?
Currently, if you put it out beside your existing trash right now, they'll just pick it up and put it in the, as long as it meets a certain size requirement, they just pick it up and put it in the truck right now. If it's sitting, in most cases, the alley next to their trash cans.
Okay.
Okay. And, see, frequency of collection. Now, this is when we get into, going back to our cart system, I guess right now we're doing twice, twice a week service. Is this something that we want to keep with the cart system? Or would y'all want to look at moving it back to maybe once a week with the cart system? I know Councilman Silvers, you said once a week would work for you, but, yes, yes, sir.
It may not work for everybody, but...
What you think, Marty?
I think twice. If we possibly don't have to do recycling twice, I mean, we possibly can do that once, but pick up trash twice.
Mr. Fleming?
Well, it's hard for me to decide on this, because it really comes down to the cost, and I think if we're going to get hammered on this, on this price increase, then we may be forced to go back to one instead. I would like, I like twice, I like the way it is right now, but I could see that it could be a possibility, because I really think that we should be getting the recycling in. So if we're going to pick up that recycling, which is an increased cost to us...
Want to keep it at one?
Yeah, we may have to go back to one in order to do that, in order to keep it fairly close in price. And I think it might have to be a sacrifice. Again, this is, you know, this has been my theme for today about sacrifice, but we may have to work things out a little better.
Sounds like blackmail to me.
Yeah.
Can I add something to what he just said? I know that there's been times when, you know, and I'm okay with the once, but if I don't have enough trash, my pickup is Monday and Thursday, I guarantee you, if I don't have any trash, enough trash for the Thursday pickup, I won't even put my cart out, and hoping I'm saving the company, you know, some gas expense for them not having to stop by my house, you know? So if, I guess, I'd urge citizens that if you don't have enough, or maybe you do, those big carts hold a lot of trash, but if you've got a couple of small bags in there, you're not worried about whether it smells bad or not. Again, I just feel kind of bad putting it out a second time, so.
Feel bad or lazy?
Well, my wife would argue with that.
Daniel?
We had a once a week pickup in Eagle Pass, and I had a family of five at the time. We didn't have an issue, we didn't have the, of course, we didn't have the recycling, but we just learned how to crush up the milk, plastic cart, and you crushed everything down, and we always managed to do just fine with a family of five once a week pickup.
Don?
I think we're going to have to look at our recycling. I kind of agree that we're, if we go single-stream on recycling, we're only going to have one pickup as far as it goes on trash, I think, to be affordable. But if we take our baby steps and have area recycling, you know, then I think two would be reasonable.
Mr. Wardlaw?
A lot of people need the twice a week pickup, and I think we should leave it like that, and, you know, if we get hammered on the cost, we can always look at it again, but two times a week's fine with me.
Okay. And it may be something as we move forward too, that we start off with twice a week service, and then as we move into a single-stream, like Councilman Vardeman stated, maybe, you know, one time a week they come by and they pick up the recycling, and the other time a week they come by and actually pick up the trash, and be kind of equal out there as to where hopefully it works out that way, so it's something to look forward to.
I'd be inclined to go with two, I like two, two days a week, but as has been said, I think that that dollar amounts what's going to make our decision.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll start off with looking at two times a week, and then we'll work from there. All right, the Citizens Free Dumping Program, kind of going back into our bulk trash discussion, just kind of want to let y'all, let y'all know as we go forward with this, the Citizens Free Dumping Program is, of course, I think we may need to come back and visit. I know, Mayor, you've had a couple of calls here lately on it, and we're getting more and more people that are wanting to use this program, and we can definitely tell that by the cost associated with it. Two years ago, our cost was roughly 122,000, I believe, is what it cost us for the Citizens Free Dumping Program. This last year, it cost me 167,000, so people are using our program. And apparently, it's gaining more ground and becoming more popular, so it's something that we want to look at, and I just want to bring that to y'all's attention, that, you know, this program is costing, as people are using it, but I don't know if it's something that y'all want to revisit, or if it's something y'all want to maintain and keep going, and how we want to look at that as we move forward.
Start with you, Don.
My thoughts on that are, it depends on how we work, you know, if we go with the carts and then have quarterly pickup at the house for bulk items, we may not even want to mess with this, but, you know, I think it all depends on how it comes out in the wash with all this stuff.
Okay.
Mr. Wardlaw?
I'm in favor of leaving the program like it is unless somebody can convince me otherwise, and they might, but I like the program.
Okay.
Mr. Fleming?
I actually have used that program multiple times. I think, though, that I would be more in favor of doing, I know that's all computerized, you can put the address in where you're coming from, and going back to maybe, if you're going to do a bulk pickup four times at someone's house, maybe you can only go out to the landfill twice a year or something like that. Because I know that there are people that are taking advantage of this. These are, you know, it's contractors or somebody like that that's working, and they're using, they're getting their free in by doing it once a month, every single month of the year. Do you have numbers on that? I know you probably don't now.
Yeah, it's one of those things that we realize there's some abuse out there, and the guys out at Republican out at the landfill, they do a really good job trying to police it as best they can, but based on the parameters of the program, they just can't catch all of it, so. But yes, I do know that there is some abuse of the program, but...
Could they take that back, though, to like, say, twice a year?
If that's council's pleasure, we can redesign the program however y'all would like to see it done.
Well, that's what I'd be more in favor of, especially if you're going to do four bulk pickups at your house, and then maybe twice a year out there, taking a trailer out there. I think you can get by with twice a year. The average person could.
Marty?
Well, I think definitely, I tend to agree with Rodney, most definitely, we could cut those down by four, because there's four others we're going to have, so. I'd say we cut them down somehow, we don't give them one free every month.
Okay. Well, and if that's the consensus amongst everybody, we can, and of course, I know, Mr. Wardlaw, you said you want to, you'd be in favor of keeping it the same, but we can definitely look at changing the parameters of the program.
Is this both residential and commercial?
It's residential only. It's residential only.
Oh, I wouldn't mind cutting it back some, I don't have a problem with that, you know, four times a year or whatever.
Okay.
Want to talk you into two?
You said you could be talked into it.
Quattro. Four.
I think I could go with once every other month, especially if we're going to incorporate this bulk trash pickup. I think we could do away with, you know, cutting it in half, so, maybe once every other month.
Clear as mud.
I like the every month.
I've got two, four, and six, so we got in well.
Now you got a twelve. I mean, the purpose of this is to clean up our city and to keep it clean and to get rid of this unwanted junk. I like this once a month pick, allowing them to go out once a month and dump, and I think if we don't allow that, then I think we're going to see more trash along 50th Street, and that's kind of the way I gauge things. I know you would go up on our prices, you start seeing more piles along the roads going to the dump, and we don't want this, because it's going to cost us more money to go out and pick their junk up than it does to let them go ahead and dump it in the first place. I like once a month letting them dump free. That's, and we know it's being used, you've told us about the month, the amount, we're using, our citizens are using it. So that means that they're throwing stuff away that they don't need. If we start cutting back, they're going to stop dumping, and we're going to have clutter building up in the neighborhood, so I'd like to keep it once a month.
Well, I guess, I'm almost going to say I want to agree with the mayor, and that sounds strange, but we're only charged now currently on what it's used.
Yes.
So if we leave it at 12 once a month, and it's not used because people are using the bulk pickup, then we're not, it doesn't cost us anything anyway, right?
No, it won't cost, if they don't drive over the scales, it won't cost us any extra.
See how wise I am now?
Well, I wouldn't go there, but...
Well, your plaque does say wisdom on it, so.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't have, yeah. I guess I wouldn't have trouble with 12.
Mayor?
Not charged.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My issue is, whether we pay or it's free, is driving down into the cell. Is there a way to require some kind of a...
As we move forward and we negotiate, one of the things, and one of our major concerns, and we've talked about this before, is a station set up that's not on the working face of the landfill, where citizens can go and deposit their trash into bins at a convenience station set up at the landfill to keep people off of the working face, and that's something that I believe is a must to get people off the working face, so.
I agree with that.
That's there now, that's in place?
No, it's not in place now, but as we move forward, that's something I believe that we should require the landfill operator to provide, is a convenience station.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Is the industry, the industry as a whole is moving that way?
Yes, a lot of the landfills that you go to, especially in the larger metropolitan areas, they're all that way, where they keep citizens off the working face, and it's just so much safer that way.
That's pretty nice.
And if they're throwing away something of value, then it wouldn't go in the landfill, it could go to scrap place.
That's it, somewhere else, so.
We might actually make a little on it.
A little diversion, so. Talking about the contract itself, as far as on the collection side of it, currently we have both the, of course, the residential and commercial side franchised under a franchise tax, which grants exclusivity to those, to those two functions, to the, to currently Republic Services right now, and it basically exclusive rights to anything, any commercial or residential trash inside the city limits. That's pretty much standard practice across the industry, especially out here in West Texas. Now, you start getting in some of the metropolitan areas, bigger areas, sometimes you see the commercial maybe put on the open market, but just wanted to touch base with y'all on that. Is that something y'all want to continue to see, the franchised, both residential and commercial?
Rodney, you want to start this?
I'd be for that. I'd like to leave it the way it is.
I agree.
I have no problem with it, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Talking about the exclusive contract, how many surrounding communities use our landfill, come and dump in our landfill? How many of the merchants and the walls and the, just off the top of your head, do you have any idea how many?
I'd have to, for a dozen?
A dozen.
A dozen communities.
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
All right, and let's talk about recycling on this end as well too. Right now, there is no exclusivity issue for any recycling, so anybody, I guess, at this point could come in and start a recycling company in town and go door to door and charge people to collect. Is that something, I guess you would want to also see wrapped up in the exclusivity agreement on the recycling side of things?
What's the argument for that, rather than letting competition?
I would, I would think, looking at it from my standpoint, of course, I'm not a contractor, but looking at it from my standpoint, if we do go to the cart system and we want to go to a single-stream recycling system versus some kind of area distribution or area collection center for recycling, if they're going from door to door, I think if it's not an exclusive portion of that contract, I believe that your cost would increase dramatically on the recycling side of things, if that makes sense.
I thought we already had people doing that, and I know we don't have a recycling portion of it.
Well, we do have a recycling center, though, where you can carry stuff.
But I'm saying, there are already individuals out there doing that.
Yes, you know, we have Go Green that collects, I know he collects certain specific items, I'm not sure exactly what all he collects, but certain specific items. I'm not sure of how his structure is, if he's charging for those services or not, I'm not sure how he's set up on that.
I think he is.
Is he? Okay.
From what I understand, this recycling is not a moneymaker anyway, it's a money loss, so I wouldn't have a problem. I don't know that I would go exclusive. I don't know, I think I'd leave it open to the market. That's just me. What do you say?
I think that's what I see it.
I think it is too. Don?
I'm kind of scared I'm agreeing with both of y'all now.
That's another market reason. Johnny?
I'm on the fence, because if it's going to increase the price of, you know, us doing recycling with, you know, the folks out there, then I'm against it. us doing recycling with, you know, the folks out there, then I'm against it. But I don't know that, you know, what, is it going to happen?
It's, and of course, it could be a negotiation point, too. As we look to move forward, we could, if you'd rather us look at, in the negotiation phases, to negotiate the recycling side of it, to see which may be more beneficial to whether to leave it, you know, to give it an exclusiveness, or to leave it on the open market. That could be a negotiation point when we get down to price factor.
How does that affect Go Green or Butts Recycling, is what I would wanna know? If it's going to be a detriment to their business?
It definitely could be. Now, of course, you could just, you could just do it. We'll just have to look at it. You could make it exclusive to residential only, and commercial recycling could be different, so...
What's your thing, Marty?
I'll go along with y'all.
Okay. Mr. Fleming?
I'm good with leaving it open.
Okay. All right.
All right. Next, let's talk about the landfill contract. One of the things that I would like to see us do with y'all's approval is, currently, we have landfill contract and our collections contract all wrapped up into one. I would actually like to see us split this contract into two different contracts. One that focuses, one contract focuses on collections, and the other one focuses on landfill. I believe that just having them separated makes things a lot cleaner and a lot easier for us to follow and track as we go through, and trying to keep up with all the different things that are in the contract. It'll clean it up, make it easier. But one of the things that we would like to do there is get y'all's opinion. Would y'all like to see a term contract, kind of what we have now, or would y'all maybe be open to looking at more of a, a long-term life of site contract? These, of course, the longer the contract that you're willing to provide, the more upfront monies may be available to us in the negotiation process. One thing we've looked at with, you know, maybe having of our existing permit, you know, estimates of fifteen years of life left, I think with recycling program, you start getting some diversion from that. We can probably extend it a little bit further based on our existing permit. So, a life of site contract, maybe a twenty-year contract, it might open things up in the negotiation process for us to see a little more upfront monies versus setting it at a five- or a ten-year contract. But like I said, that's up to y'all. What's y'all's preference? Would y'all rather see a five- or a ten-year term contract on that, or would y'all rather see something a little longer?
I want what's best for the citizens, and I don't know what that is. I think you'd probably be better making that decision, and me, I'm willing to leave that in your hands. Johnny?
The more I've been involved in this situation that we're in, the more I think that not only is it, would it benefit us to go a longer, I'm, you know, twenty years would be fine with me, because that gives someone like Republic an upfront, you know, some time to renovate themselves, you know, of what we will be asking for. So, I mean, five or ten years, that's like five weeks or ten weeks. I mean, it goes by fast. That's not enough time for them to restructure of what is coming to the table for them. So, I would more lean to a fifteen, twenty-year type of setup, giving them time to breathe, and giving us, you know, the benefit of having the best deal out there. So, that's just me.
Marty?
I would think the longer the contract, the better the price, the better the rate. I'd definitely be in favor of doing what would be the best beneficial for the constituents of St. Angelo.
Mr. Fleming?
Definitely. I would go towards the longer. I don't know that if I'd go towards twenty, just because I think we're gonna have issues with the landfill and us going over to the other, what is it, three hundred and sixty acres that we have across the street?
Three hundred and twenty, yes, sir.
Three hundred and twenty acres over there. I think that, you know, ten or fifteen years, I think, would be good. Maybe ten years with another five-year option on it or something like that. But I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go less than ten, for sure.
Okay. We, looking at it, and of course, there are different options out there, even for our existing site, to where we could, you know, look at amending our existing permit to extend the life of our existing site, or depending on what our cost-benefit analysis comes out to be at our existing site versus construction at a new site. You know, there's a lot of different things that we need to look at there as we move forward. And even if we did, if y'all want me to look at a life-of-site type of contract, maybe for, you know, that would go out fifteen or twenty years, I would only want to make that as the existing permit states right now. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't wanna go, I wouldn't wanna base a contract right now, negotiations on a contract right now on what might be. I'd rather do it on what I know.
Right.
Mr. Wardeman?
I really lean towards, you know, ten with a five-year renewal, just because it's so hard to predict what's gonna be happening, you know, how things are gonna be working much past two years, much less ten. So, I'd kinda stick with that. And then, like you say, have a five-year renewal or something else to extend it.
Mr. Wardlaw, what's feeling, sir?
I have none at this point. No. I sort of agree with Rodney and Don, or along the lines of a ten-year contract with five-year option. However, I do notice in this contract here, it does have a life of a site. In paragraph 1.53, it allows them to extend, based on the life expectancy of a current cell, and I don't know how all this meshes in with what we're talking about, but...
The, and the life of, the life of site would be the life of the entire permitted area versus what you just stated there in the contract. Once we have built a specific, a individual cell that they are developing, that they're, that they're working in right then, and they've built and they've developed it, they, if we come up to the end of the term of the contract, and we decided, you know, we give them notice, hey, guys, we're, you know, we don't want your, you know, services anymore, or whatever, we're getting out of the trash business, whatever, they have the option to renew the contract until the life of that specific cell they're working in is completed. That's what that, that's what that grants them in the, in the existing contract, just the specific cell.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. And is that in play here with this contract renewal? What's the life of the existing cell?
Currently, right now, the existing cell that they're working in right now is projected to be finalized just almost in conjunction with the end of this initial ten-year term.
I'm sorry, say that again. The current?
The current, the life of the current cell that they're working in right now is expected to be completed. They're supposed, they're expecting to fill that cell completely about the same time that this contract expires.
Next year, by the way.
July, July thirty-first of fourteen. And it's, you know, I mean, give it, you know, you know, a month one way or the other, but that's kind of the general expected timeframe.
Okay.
And you can put my vote anywhere in there. It's wherever you think.
What do we think? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir, Johnny?
Shane, explain to us what we have now with Republic versus your idea of splitting the contracts. I mean, what, how much is it going to be difficult to do that? I mean, what?
No, it's not. We would basically just take the collection side of it and the landfill side of it, and just pull them apart into two different documents. That way, we can very clear, it's kind of muddled as you read through our document. We're talking about collections on this page, you flip the page, and then all of a sudden, we're talking about landfill. Flip the page, and we're back on collections again. So, I would really like to completely separate those two functions, just in two separate documents, not...
But they would have the same length of term, right?
I would, I would, yes. I would let them have the same length of term on both sides. That's really, as far as maximizing any of our negotiations, you would definitely want A to match B. All right. So, we will look at that in our negotiation phase. And the big question is, your feelings on renegotiating the existing contract with Republic Services, or would y'all like to see us send, send all this out for a request for proposals?
I'll start this one. I don't have one problem with Republic. I think y'all have done excellent service. I'm very proud of what you've done. No problems. That said, I'd like an RFP, because I know that there's two, maybe three companies that's interested. And competition, competition is good for the citizens. I would like an RFP, and I would like to have negotiations, and whatever's the best for the city is the one I'm gonna be interested in. That's me. Johnny?
You know, I thought, I've thought about this one long and hard, and I've visited with both. And, you know, it's, I was kinda on the fence there for a while, but I would, I am more leaning to the renegotiation, because I don't care if it's Republic, or if it was TDS, or if it was Waste Management. The mayor just said it. The service that they've provided us for the, these last ten years has been excellent, you know? So, I don't care who is in place, you know? I, I just, I guess I'm loyal to whoever's there. So, I'm leaning towards renegotiation, and, and giving them an option to, hey, or a chance to, hey, this is what we're looking for, if they can provide it. Because at the end of the day, if they don't, if we don't like what they bring, or bring to us, then there's other folks out there that would or can. So, that's my thought right now. And again, I said, I don't care. I guess I'm being loyal to them, because whether their name was TDS or Waste Management, whoever is out there, I'm, I have no problem with the services they've provided. So, if at the end of the day, it goes RFP, and I get our vote, it, so be it. I can work with anybody that's out there.
Marty?
Well, I, I guess, Mayor, I kinda agree with you. I really, I've sat down with, with Republic, and they, I'm very pleased with, with, with the service. I admire them for doing the pilot program, so we know where, so we know how that worked. But it was my understanding that staff wanted RFP. Is that right?
Yes, sir. I mean, I believe that, I believe the only way that we will understand the true value of our asset is by an RFP. I mean, I kinda have an idea of what, what our asset is worth, but I can't, I can't promise you that I'm, I'm right on the money or what it would actually be worth on the open market. So, to me, for the citizens, the best, the best way to look at this would be with an RFP. Now, with that said, it doesn't mean that we go out for an RFP. Y'all may decide y'all don't like any of the proposals, and y'all may want to renegotiate with, with Republic at that point, which is fine and dandy, too. Y'all don't, just because we go out for an RFP, doesn't mean you have to like any of them. So, y'all can, y'all can reject all proposals, and, and we can move forward with renegotiations at that point, however y'all would like to see it. I just, and again, I have absolutely no issues with Republic Services. They have done a great job. They've been very responsive. Anytime I call those guys, they're, they're right there on the money, and they get the job done, handle any complaints, you know? They've done a great job. But as we look forward, and, and we need to know the value of our asset, in which, again, we haven't, to my knowledge, it hasn't been bid out on the open market since we acquired our permit in eighty-four. I don't, it's, it's never been, it's never been bid out. And again, you know, thirty years ago, before the new regulations came down, and there was a dump in Everett County, and ours was basically a dump at the time, it's a landfill now. Back then, it was pretty much more of a dump. But, you know, the landfill may not have been a big asset back then, because everybody had one, and, and they didn't, and they didn't need, need a good centralized, well-run landfill that can meet and maintain all the requirements set forth in the new laws. But the, but now, that's not the case. The laws changed, new regulations came down, and landfills are assets to cities. If you own one, it's an asset. And it can be worth considerable amounts of money to, to the municipality, especially in a situation where we are a central hub, if you will, to a lot of different areas. And again, I believe the only way to truly get a good value of what our asset is, is with an RFP.
Mr. Fleming?
I'm really torn on this one. I, I think Republic has done a super good job on this, on this thing. And I really, when I was coming into this today, I was leaning one way. I think that we probably should, just for all purposes and clarity on this, we probably should do an RFP. I think it's probably the fairest thing. Shane has really turned me on this. He and I had a discussion before about learning the value, the true value of this asset, and it is an asset that we have as a city. I think that I would be doing the citizens of our city a disfavor of not allowing this to be a very clear and open bid process, and we get the bid. What I was most nervous about on TDS, and I've told them this to their face, is that I'm most nervous about the second company doing the bids on this, is their size. Shane actually explained to me on some size things that, you know, when they do this FRP, they're gonna have to come through, and they're gonna have to do a, show us the financials that they are capable of doing, and doing those things. So, I think, I'm in favor of doing the RFP, and I think that that would be the way to go.
Mr. Wardeman?
RFP.
Mr. Wardlaw?
Renegotiation of the existing contract, and I'm not, I don't have the same concerns as voiced here. I'm mainly concerned about getting service to the citizens, and we can figure out the price. When you, when you change horses in the middle of the stream, and we've got a great service going here at a very reasonable price, you're taking the risk of getting some unknown person in there, some business that doesn't perform. And you think the citizens are gonna, are upset now about something, they're gonna really be upset if their service goes to pot. And just for what it's worth, I think Charlotte is for, even though she's not here, she's for renegotiation of the contract, too, for whatever that's worth. And I don't know what the vote is now, but...
Well, let's take a consensus. RFP?
Actually, you can take an action.
You can actually, you can, you can, yes, sir, if you...
Mayor, can I ask something?
It is an action. Yes, Mr. Silas.
And I guess, and I visited with Jimmy yesterday, and, and I think, and I expressed that my concern is, and maybe they'll make it right, but my concern was, there is no, they have no infrastructure now. Their customer service is three hours away. So, some of those things that, you know, I'm not totally convinced that we're there yet, you know? So, that, that is the reason I was leaning towards staying with who we are now, we have now. I just want it to be a smooth transition, and I just see there's, there's nothing on the ground.
Well, and, and there's, and there's nothing to say that, even if we go out for an RFP process, because there, I've been contacted by several other companies besides TDS. TDS is just, you know, they're here, and they have a very, I guess, the Gregories are from here, so they have a, maybe more of a vested interest in coming back to the community, you know? I'm not sure. But just because we put it out for an RFP, doesn't mean that y'all are going to like their proposal and, and want to go with them, and there would be any transition. Republic's proposal may be the best proposal, and y'all may, and that may be the direction that y'all wanna go, and you choose to go. The only thing that the proposal does is it just, it opens it up, so everybody can sharpen their pencils, and they can tell us what our asset's worth. I mean, and that's, and that's what all of the RFP process boils down to, is just having multiple people confirm that our asset is worth this to the city. And like I said, y'all may not like what RFP has, has, or what TDS has to say, or Waste Management, or any other company out there that may want to bid on this process. Y'all may not like what they have to say. You may not think that they can transition based on their proposal, and based on their, what they present to us through the process. And, and those are valid, those are very valid questions that I would have for any, for any bidder, or any person that turns in a proposal. How are you gonna handle these issues?
Well, one thing that I keep hearing time and time again, and I want your opinion on it, or Michael Daines', or even Daniels', that, you know, we're not getting the best bang for our buck on the landfill. Are we, or are we not? I mean, let's just put it out on the table. Are we getting what we?
The city.
Are we, the city, getting the best money out there, or is there more? I mean, is there, are they taking advantage, or they, you know, so I...
Again, without us ever bidding it out, I can't answer that yes or no for sure. But I feel certain that there are a... I feel certain that there are a lot better deals out there for the city than what we're currently getting right now. And even through the negotiation process, as we would move forward, we would ensure that that would be the, would be the case. And if, you know, you give me direction to go negotiate with Republic Services today, I mean, I have, there are specific issues that are, you know, that we're going to negotiate out that would be in more favor for the city.
If someone wants to move on this, then we'll, if we get a motion in a second, then we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody want to make, anybody want to make a decision?
I've got one last question first. Now, we go out for RFPs, we do not have to necessarily take the lowest bid, right?
No, sir. These will be proposals. There will, it's, it's not a hard bid. You have to like the entire package. If you, if you don't like the, if you don't like the entire package that's presented and you don't feel comfortable that you could negotiate a favorable contract with any of them, you can, you can reject all proposals.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think it's just a win-win situation for us as the city. Again, you know, when I came into this today, I was, I wasn't going to do this, but I think that the RFP is the, is the fairest, most clear way to do it and make it where we're doing the right thing for the citizens out there. And, and possibly we could get a much better deal by doing this also, because we may have a little bit of leverage that way. It's all about leverage in negotiating.
Put it in the form of a motion.
I motion that we put it out for an RFP.
Second. Let's open it up for public comment. I know there's going to be some of that. We've already dealt with this for almost an hour, so let's, let's keep it five minutes. Please, sir.
I just have a couple of questions on bulk pickup. Is there any restrictions on how long, you know, that can be sitting there? Like if it's going to be only picked up every three months or something like? I don't want it sitting out there for two months. And plus, I would like to know what, what is, what would be picked up in the recycling? You know, just exactly what would be put, put up, put out? And I lived in a city where they had the regional drop-offs and that seemed to work quite well. Even if you have, you know, individual pickup, pickups at individual houses, everybody's not going to participate. And I agree with the open bid process. I think it's open, you know, it's fair and it's part of open government and that way we can see exactly, you know, what we have and what is out there. And I think a 10-year contract is better than a 20-year contract because we can predict the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. State your name and we're trying to limit to about five minutes.
Charles Young, gentlemen. How are y'all today? Couple of things. Mr. Silas, one of the things I noticed when you were making your comments, you were asking for specific answers to specific questions without having any of these other businesses have the opportunity to answer those questions. I think that's a mistake. Basically, the way you're treating these, these other people that would, would go out to bid is Republic is innocent until proven guilty. Everybody else is guilty until proven innocent. I think that's a backwards way to look at it. I think we talk about competition and one of the things that Mr. Wardlaw mentioned was, you don't want to change horses in midstream? Well, you know, 100 years ago, everybody rode a horse to work. Nobody does that anymore because there's a more efficient, better technologically way to do things. I think that's a good way to look at this. Just because they've done a great job in the past doesn't mean they're going to do a great job in the future. It also doesn't mean they're going to do a poor job in the future. Requesting these bids, as you mentioned, gives you the opportunity, you can pick one, you can pick any of the others. I think it would be a huge mistake to judge these people without hearing what they have to say. And putting it into a bid and listening to it and evaluating it and getting input from the people would be an excellent, excellent way to do it and I think would be in the best long-term interest of San Angelo, just like you did the water. We don't know what it's going to look like in five years. We don't know what it's going to look like in 10 years or 15 years or 20 years. That was the other issue with the duration of the contract, is if you look at the duration of the contract, we don't know what the technology's going to be in 10 years. 20 years ago, we didn't know we were going to have Hickory issues. We do now. It changes every single day. And by locking it in, I think you're making a mistake in you're, you're losing those potential economies of scale with the technology that's available. And that technology literally changes during the course of this, this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Vera Kirkpatrick and somebody said if you keep going up there, they'll want you to run for the council, but I'm not ready to run for the council. But anyway, I just would like to suggest that, that the council asked the staff to submit a request for a proposal for the solid waste and landfill contract. This is a $20 to $30 million contract. If, it is my understanding that this contract has never been put out for bid. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Why wouldn't we want competition for the contract? Why would you consider renewing such a large contract without looking at all the options? Especially the ones related to the landfill. We have a company here that wants to present a presentation that the owners are from here. They were born and raised in San Angelo and they're asking you to allow them just to bid on the contract. And as far as the customer service being 30 or three hours away, I'm sure that if they get the contract, they'll hire some local people to take care of the customer service. So I ask you to open this up for competition and free enterprise, you know, is good for the city. And let's get all the options out there on the table before you make your decision. So I ask you to issue a request for a proposal for the solid waste contract and the landfill contract today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name and you've got five, sir.
I am Fred Preston, one of the owners of Butts Recycling. San Angelo does have a recycling company here. Been working with the city, working with the Safe Center, if you're familiar with that. Been supportive of that for over 24 years. What came to my mind and what they were talking about was when they said exclusive commercial recycling. Sorry, I have a voice problem. My only concern with that was what would that limit us to? We would love for y'all to come out, you could look at our facilities, see what we've been doing and what we can do, we're willing to work and to recycle into this in any way we can. But basically, we just want to state who we are and that, where to help.
Thank you, sir. Surely that's not all.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner and I have to agree with the people so far that have been in favor of putting this out for a request for proposal, free enterprise and all that. But I think it's also a chance to see some possibly innovative solutions, ideas, something different than what we have right now. This does not mean anything against Republic and what they're doing, but having a chance to review how other people do business, how other people would run our landfill and our, use our assets and everything, gives a clearer picture of what we actually have here, both the positive assets of it and the liabilities involved in this. This is a complex operation. And having more ideas, more innovation, more proposals, even if in the end we end up renegotiating with Republic for continuation, just getting that input is going to be a positive step in the right direction. And a minor point on the number of times somebody can go out to the landfill, instead of doing it necessarily just on a, every so often, you know, every month, every two months, every six months, maybe you might want to look at allowing them so many trips a year out there. If they have to use all of those in one timeframe because they're doing some major renovation and they use up their, say, four trips a year in four months, that's it. But that may be another way to look at it as opposed to going strictly on time. Don't limit them on how often they can do it, but how many times they can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Turner. You've got five minutes, Mr. Gregory.
I will do my best, sir. Knowing that I had so much to talk to you guys about and present with so little time and I totally respect your time, it's precious, I prepared a handout that I'm asking to be passed out. I think there's 10 or 11, so there should be plenty. Here, I'd like to turn and give one to staff. Time well spent. So I, I will, I will touch on the high points of this. This is my message to you today that I wanted to leave. I knew I couldn't cover it all. I wanted to make sure it stayed and remains, so I did it in a, in a handout. My, my wife Kay and Jimmy, my brother, my business partner are here. I'd like to go right immediately to pages two and three that give an overview. I know there's been some concerns about how big our company is, what our capacity is and our ability to service this account. This is not unusual. We've heard this before from other times that we've gone in competition on, on major accounts with, with Republic. You can see from those first two pages that the Gregory family has been active in business here for 62 years. I bought out my father's business in 1984 and I've functioned in business from working for him and then buying his business and starting my own business in 1972 here and have been active myself since 72 and active as the Gregory business in recycling since 1951. And you can also see, looking down, I won't take the time to go through it, but different awards and the dates thereof, of 30-year contracts with the City of San Antonio, with the City of Austin, two 30-year contracts and one 20-year contracts, when we purchased different companies. And on the, the second page, which is page three, the award for Alpine, which we were able to take from Republic. As a matter of fact, they didn't even respond to the RFP proposal. They, they were so convinced we could not handle it, they didn't respond to the city's RFP. All the way to last night, the City of Merton voted to negotiate an exclusive contract with TDS for both residential and commercial waste collection and disposal. Those are highlights that deal with our company's performance that we thought were pertinent to this San Angelo contract. On page four is a TDS integrated company of 13 different business units and this shows you what our units have. They've worked together, 200-plus trucks, 600 employees, 100-plus municipalities and homeowners association and mud contracts. Some of the names are listed there of the cities. Georgetown is about half the size of San, San Angelo. We have absolutely no problem handling that. You can see again, the, the contracts that we've handled and the commitments we have. And believe me, San Antonio and Austin don't take lightly relying on us exclusively for these type of services. If something happens, it gets bad very, very quickly, like in minutes or hours. So I'll talk a little bit more about that later. If you go to page five, I would like to particularly call your attention to the situation with the landfill. The TCEQ requires every landfill owner, which is the city in this case, to submit annual reports. Those annual reports are, you can easily track. They're online. You can go get them yourselves. I have them in my briefcase back there. In 2003, you can see over in column one, the year, column two, the total tons buried, the diversion tonnage, what was reported as not land, taken in but not landfilled, the compaction rate and the remaining year's life. This is a regional landfill, like Shane said. In 2003, the city reported 41 years' life remaining. In 2011, it was down to 17.2. In 2012, a year later, it was 13 years. At the rate the landfill is filling up, the landfill could be full by the end of this next five-year term of the extension. It is filling up that quickly. The, the remaining life of the landfill is increasing rapidly due to a combination of poor compaction of waste in the landfill, minimum landfill diversion of things that can be recycled and composted, and much more waste coming in from outside of San Angelo, which it's reported that approximately 50% of the waste going into the landfill comes from outside the city. The diversion is less than 1%. On page six, you can see some of the regional benefits of having a landfill. Currently, we understand that the solid waste from approximately 25 municipalities is being disposed in the San Angelo landfill. This is one thing that Republic had reported to council previously. The city's budget shows that the landfill is not profitable for the city and is not generating adequate revenues to pay for the city's future financial landfill obligations.
Excuse me. Counsel, you want him to continue?
Give him five more, Mayor.
Do I have a consensus? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. The continued expansion, extension of the trashway contract has resulted in the city's landfill becoming a major liability when it could be a major asset, as Shane commented. And I will move quicker. Page eight, in San, in San Angelo, TDS would like the, to present these nine things. I won't take the time to go over them, but there are nine things listed that we would like the opportunity to present in an RFP response. Page nine talks about what recycle, single-stream recycling is, the type of products, and it makes a statement at the top that TDS will work with the local recycling facility, Butts Recycling, on what they can handle and as necessary will transport the remaining recyclables to the TDS MRF in Austin until a MRF is justified in San Angelo. And yes, we can transfer to, to Austin from here. Our contract, our 30-year contract with the City of San Antonio transfers from San Antonio to Austin approximately a third of the waste that the city collects from residences in the city. Page 12, TDS requests that for the first time in approximately 40 years, the city council seek and accept competitive proposals for the city's solid waste services contract. TDS requests the council consider the eight things listed on that page and, and to not be discouraged or frightened by Republic's representatives' claim that we've been made aware of, that TDS will not be able to adequately respond to a disaster, will not have the resources to purchase and deliver the necessary equipment, or help the city with permitting needs of the landfill, or that TDS personnel do not know how to professionally manage a landfill of all things. Build a handling, hauling operation and service a major contract. TDS has proven its worth many times before and will again, if the council will just give us an opportunity. Our reputation speaks for itself and some of you have seen our site and you, you have an idea of how we, how we operate. That, on page 13, you see a timeline, a suggested timeline. I do not know what this, what the staff's suggested would be, but this is typical of an RFP process and it really promotes the, that time is of the essence. There's really not time to negotiate for a couple of months and then do an RFP process and have equipment on the street on August 1st at the first day of this next contract. We feel this is a reasonable timeline. Depending upon how the city calculates this contract's annual gross revenue value and the contractor's financial benefit of using the city landfill, we believe the annual value of this contract is between $15 and $30 million. TDS sales representatives are now calling on customers and have found rates for residential solid waste collection services outside the incorporated limits of the City of San Angelo to range from $25 to $130 per month, with many in the $70 per month range. This shows a serious need for competition within the market and perhaps why Merton took the action that they did last night. There are very few options for recycling. There are very few options for recycling, particularly as curbside. This is why TDS will remain a competitive player in this market regardless of what ends up out of this operation. To my knowledge, again, over the past 40 years, the city's solid waste contract has never been bid out or put out for an RFP. Please allow us the opportunity to present ourselves in that proposal. TDS urges the council to competitively bid through an RFP process. There will still be time, as staff has told you, for the council to renegotiate with Republic if the council chooses to not do an award consistent with the RFP process. We believe the city has nothing to lose and much to gain. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Right on time.
Good, thank you.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Any other comment? Okay, we're going to close the public comments section. Is there any comment from counsel before we vote on this? Motion has been made that we go out for an RFP. It has been seconded. All in favor of going out for an RFP, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we have two nays and we have four ayes, so we'll be taking it out for an RFP.
And Mayor, let me just say that I can live with an RFP because just bring your best game, you know?
Yes, sir.
And at the end of the day, whoever brings the best.
Whatever happens, happens.
Whatever happens.
How about let's take a 10-minute break? 2:47, Mr. Rais. It is 3:05. Let's get the meeting started again. And just so everybody knows, at 4 o'clock, Mr. Wardlaw has got, is going to make the motion that we adjourn, so we need to get through with this. Let's go to number 18. You ready to go, Mr. Banks? Number 18, consideration of providing city staff direction relating to changing from traditional bidding, low responsible bidder process to the request for competitive seal proposal process that provides selection criteria relating to local businesses. Mr. Banks, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. A few weeks back, you asked us to revisit how we were bidding construction projects, and one of the methods that is available to us is the request for a competitive seal proposal process. I just wanted to briefly tell you some of the little differences between the bid process and the proposal process when it comes to construction contracts, things that are pretty typical in this process, and then ask for some direction also from you regarding some criteria weighting with this project. This request for proposal process does allow some other things to be considered other than just price. Most times, it cannot be used with outside funding, such as federal projects usually require a lowest responsible bidder. So, it will depend on the terms and conditions of the grant or the funding that we're getting as to whether this process can be used for that type of project. So, I can't use it for everything. If you like the process, you want to try it out and go forward with it, we'll use it as often as we can to do that, to provide some weighting towards local preference. The selection criteria must be published in the proposal, so we can't throw something out there and then, when it all comes back, say, "Well, that's not what we meant." Whatever we decide to go with is what we're stuck with until you guys reject the bids. Same advertising has to be advertised for two consecutive weeks. One of the neat things about the program is that it allows for best and final offers from all the folks that submit stuff, so we can go back to them before we even come to council and say, "Okay, give us your best and final offers on this product or services." We can kind of pre-negotiate a contract and see if we can come, change the specs up a little bit and see if we can get better deals. Contracts may be negotiated. I know if you've been up here several times already where we've had contracts that have came in over budget, and they will easily request that you award the contract with the understanding that we're going to do a change order, reduce it to fit our budgets. With this process, we can negotiate the contract down to the budget before we come to council. So, that's, in my opinion, is a plus. I'm sure the city attorney would agree. We'd rather have it negotiated to that point before you came up to. Negotiations does not necessarily begin with the lowest price. Most likely, will begin with the one that is highest ranked based on all the selection criteria that's published. So, that's some of the highlights of the proposal process. There are things that we absolutely have to put in the proposals for everybody to consider to give the contractor a fair opportunity to bid on our projects, like the construction documents, the weighted selection criteria must be in there as long as the point value must be stated there, and that's what we'll use in the process to work towards awarding the contract. The estimated budget, that's kind of a double sword, to be quite honest. I don't always like to show the hand as to how much we've got to spend on the project. I prefer that they give us their best price. Lots of times, they call and we'll give it to them anyway because it's public information, but it's not something we always publish in there just because we like to keep those cards close to our chest. The estimated completion date is one of the things that we would like to put, that needs to be in there, so that they know when they need to start, when they need to complete, because it may be a difference in the way that they stage their construction projects and the personnel that would be to do that, which could, of course, affect their price. And any other information that we feel is necessary that we put in there to get fair cementals back? I'm old school, I'm used to doing flip charts, sorry. Let me catch up here. The Texas Local Government Code tells us some of the things that we can put in there. It's the price, safety records, proposed personnel, financial capability, and any other relevant factor. Now, that factor can include local preference to some degree. And from my research across the interweb, it's, you'll see a wide variety of proposals that have many, many different things as far as selection criteria and the weighting. That is usually based upon the type of the project it is, but there's one common theme through all of them, of everyone that I've seen regarding to construction contracts, no matter what they are, from buildings to public works projects, is that the highest-ranked one is always priced because we don't have unlimited money. So, the highest-ranked selection criteria is always a price. Those vary, as I said, from city to city and project to project. This one is, and I left the names of the cities off to protect the guilty and a few of the innocents, but there runs anything from past performance, project management, the types of subcontractors they're going to bring in, have they ever been in litigation, relevant experience toward the project, their financial stability. They don't even always have to add up to 100. In this case, this one adds up to 120 points. So, there's a wide range of things that we can do that can also be very, very simple. This is one from one of the smaller cities in Texas. Their highest-ranked one was 70% for price, 15 points for local presence and experience, 15 points for local area experience. So, that one, this one is very, very simple. The others can be very, very complicated, especially when you're asking for the information that the committees must now evaluate. As I said the first time, we talked about that this is a lengthier process that will require time. We are required to rank all of the respondents within 45 days after the day of opening. Typically, we would probably be at council within 45 days in a regular lowest bid process. This process will take a few weeks longer to actually get to the award process. I did some bid analysis to see how it would affect us if we went with local bidders. I know that was one of Mr. Vardman's wishes, is that we try to find a way to award as many local bidders as we could. I just want to point out there are some ramifications to doing that from a city's standpoint. Each one of these projects that I looked at, I think these are over the last two years where we had a local bidder that was not awarded the contract. It would have increased our cost of those contracts by an additional $1.6 million or increased our cost by 22% on these jobs. What I'm recommending, and I've met with several of our directors regarding their preferences, and we sat in a room and played different scenarios. We worked some different scenarios. If the local presence was 15%, where would it add up to? How would we get there? We kind of came to the conclusion that we'll let you make that decision. What I would think makes sense personally is that we try to take a balanced approach to this that would allow us to maximize as much of our budgets as we have to extend the services to the City of San Angelo citizens, and it still allows for awarding local contractors to bid to both the fair and open competition while maximizing our budgets. My recommendation would be to take a sliding scale that, based upon the estimates for the construction projects, which is similar to what the state of Texas does when they are awarding local contracts for goods or widgets or products, is that the greater the size of the contract, the smaller the percentage is. For goods, for things under $100,000, they allow 5%. Less than $500,000, it's 5%, and over 500, it was 3%. So, I sort of took the same approach, and this is certainly not scientific. It just, to me, is a way that the contract that we're going to put out for our proposals would be less than $500,000, that the weighting for local preference would be 5%, 1.5 million, less than that would be 4%, and greater than 1.5 is that they would have to be within 3% of the lowest bid for them to get maximum points on that. That still would not necessarily guarantee that they were awarded the contract, but it certainly gives them a better opportunity to win than they have now, because anything over $500,000 now, they have, it's basically based on lowest price. So, it does give them some advantage, and I feel personally that we are also being fair to the other bidders. As big as San Angelo is, it's still small enough, we don't have all the contractors in San Angelo to do all the work that we need done. That's my recommendation, and I would welcome your opinion.
I like it.
I have some questions.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Don.
You start out with the rules. Number one, the process may not be used for state or federally funded projects. Is there a percentage in there for those? I mean, if the...
Those are based strictly on lowest responsible bidder. Again, it depends on the type of funding. Some may allow it, some, most federal contracts, like many of those at the airport, they're going to tell us how, since it's their money and we're using their money, they're going to tell us how we have to bid it. In most cases, that is going to be lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, if they have 5%, the state's putting 5% in, we're putting in 95%, we still have to go with the lowest and can't use this? Or is there a percentage in there?
Their grants will spell out how we would have to do the bid process, period.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions, counsel? I think this is good.
I do, too.
I think this is good.
All right.
This is not an action, it's just...
I was seeking your opinion and advice.
...consideration of providing direction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to number 19, consideration and possible action on adopting a resolution, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a letter of intent among the cities of Abilene, Midland, and San Angelo, Texas for water supply development and delivery. Mr. Valenzuela.
Mayor, council members, of course, and for the sake of the public, just a quick reminder, we do have a West Texas Water Partnership with a member cities which are Abilene and Midland and the City of San Angelo. Basically, what it's established for is to make sure that we can seek out water sources for the long term. What it affords us as far as the partnership with these other two entities is that we can seek out more cost-effective approaches to secure those water, the water that the city will need in the future, and also gives us a bigger voice, of course, of the state. When we have 300,000 voices being heard, it's a lot easier to get our point across to our state representatives. The resources, of course, the City of San Angelo by itself would be extremely difficult to go out there and try to secure a long-term water source because the money, money's required would be too prohibitive for the city. So, it's a wonderful opportunity to team up with these two other cities. What this is, is we're looking at a letter of intent, which is intended only as an expression of interest, and it's not intended to be binding. There's one portion of it that is kind of binding, it's just that the city is stating that we intend to share in existing and to be developed water supplies at some point in the future, and also that we all agree collaboratively to participate in the regional water planning and state water planning process so as to ensure that such intentions are reflected in our water plan, the Region F Water Plan. That is not asking too much, we're already participate in that process. But again, this is kind of to memorialize between the three cities, the support that we have for each other, and that in the future, we will be looking at sharing those water It is our recommendation to approve the resolution.
We have met with Midland and with Abilene, the city manager and the mayors. This is an extremely expensive deal that we're working on here. It's very expensive. But we also know that we must have water for our citizens, and it's, we've got to find it, and we've got to develop it. And we can either go all on our own, and we can spend these excessively expensive amounts by ourself, or we can go out and divide these amounts by three. It, to me, is something that even though it is expensive, it is something that we need to do for our citizens. And to answer one question that I have heard brought forth, San Angelo has not spent and will not spend $1 on the Cedar Ridge program that Abilene is developing up in northwest Texas. We have not spent one San Angelo dollar, nor will we. So, this is something that we need to understand. We are working on developing a water supply for San Angelo and San Angelo citizens. And I'll guarantee you what, we are a very strong part of this partnership, and we will control what is spent so that our citizens will profit from this. So, it's very expensive, but water is very expensive, and it's going to get even more expensive. And if we don't, if we don't form some coalitions with some voices, we're going to be doing it ourselves. So, that's, I agree with Daniel, this is a resolution that I think that is in our best interest to pass. Any other counsel comment? Johnny?
I have a question. Looking at the resolution, do you know, Mayor, if the other two cities, if their council has signed off on it? Because I noticed that it's your name and Daniel's and Alicia, Alicia is attesting and then Ms. Bowling, but I didn't know if the other councils...
I think that they have already signed off on it.
I know Abilene has.
Yes.
I'm not sure about Midland.
It's all on their agendas. I mean, it's all working.
I believe Midland was having a meeting on the 14th or something. That's what they're going to approve at that point.
Let me rephrase my question. Are we, each council member going to sign off on this, or is it just the names that are here?
I think it says me.
Just the mayor.
Okay. And the other councils for the other two cities?
Their mayor.
The same, okay. Because if it was the other way, where everybody signed, then we'd want to do it the same, but if it's, that's not the case, I'm fine with it.
No, y'all give, y'all make the decision, you give instruction, and it gets to be my name on the line.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think you've just answered one of my questions, but it says, give you the right to... Negotiate and execute, the negotiate part is not really right in the agenda, is it? In other words, you're asking, we're asking permission, have you signed this document that's presented?
We have not signed it. I have not signed it.
No, I'm saying, but that is, that is the question at hand. It says negotiate and execute.
That's the letter of intent, actually, that was provided to you, and as far as the verbiage, there's not going to be any changes to that whatsoever.
Right.
It is what's in there right now.
So, that was my question, because it says negotiate.
Oh, I see.
That's what I'm saying.
No, we don't change this to that.
I understand.
I'm not against you, I'm not against you signing it, I just don't want you to go renegotiate.
No.
Nothing personally, you understand.
No, we're not going to renegotiate anything. It's already negotiated, it's just ready to sign. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, and I have one other question and comment. I think we're all agree that we're not going to spend any more money on the Cedar Ridge reservoir.
We haven't spent any money.
We have not spent money on Cedar Ridge. We have not spent, nor will we spend, one San Angelo dollar on Cedar Ridge.
Well, I'm not going to get in an argument with you on that right now, but we all, the council agreed that they would be, that they would understand we were not going to spend any money on Cedar Ridge. Did you and Daniel make that clear to them?
We had made it very clear to them.
Okay.
Now, there is one qualification there.
Okay.
Now, if Abilene develops their Cedar Ridge, and they're a long way away, they're just in the process, but Abilene has a portion of Ivy Water, and we have a portion of Ivy Water, and Midland has a portion of Ivy Water, and if Abilene were to finally get it developed, their Cedar Ridge, and begin to pull their water from Cedar Ridge... water from Cedar Ridge, then we would be able to negotiate with Abilene possibly to buy their allotted amount out of Ivy. So we're not spending San Angelo money, but if there were extra water in Ivy that could have been allotted to San Angelo and we needed it, we would be able to buy it. But we are not spending money on Cedar Ridge.
Yeah, well, as a lawyer, I just, I wish they'd worded this differently here on the binding understandings where they talk about Bresz's G Regional Water Plan, because we're not involved in that, and that would be an inter-basin transfer, which is illegal under Texas law without, without a permit. And so if you, if you represent and tell us that we're not going to be spending any money on Cedar Ridge, then I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Any other further comment from counsel? Do we have comment from the public on this? Come on, Turner.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. And actually, I've been in favor of regional agreements, partnerships, and so on, since before this even became a twinkling in city council's eye. I've been pushing for it for that long. I think it's a good idea if we go forward with them on new projects. Some of the projects they already have in the mill, we probably don't want any part of. At the same time, I think this is just a step that we need to keep going and bring more people in partnership with us, especially some of our major trading partners, our local businesses outside of the city, that if they dry up, San Angelo is going to dry up and blow away. So this is just a very small step for a total water partnership for the area, and it needs to be expanded into more partnerships with more people and more diversity, not just the urban areas. Thank you.
And that has been discussed.
It's actually in there.
Yeah. And the more parties we can have involved in this, the better it's going to be. And Michael and Daniel and I went to a meeting last week, and we, we pretty well laid down some, we pretty well laid down the position that San Angelo has, and we are, we are a third partner in this, and our, our interest will be looked after. Any other further public comment? If not, I'm going to call, no, I need somebody to make a motion that we accept it.
Yes, you do. I'll move...
Somebody move.
I'll move that we accept this item, number 19. I'm brain dead right now, so.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution to have you, the mayor and city manager.
Sign it.
Yes.
Well, somebody second that.
Second. God, did that make any sense?
That was kind of a convoluted motion, but anyhow, it has been made. It has been made and seconded that we accept this resolution and that San Angelo join the, the partnership, San Angelo, Midland, and, and Abilene, to find and develop water. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Put a six O on that one, Ms. Ramirez.
That's called brain dead.
All righty, let's go on to the next one, and this is number 20. Consideration of authorizing funding and payment for the city's proportionate share of cost incurred for services pursuant to the inter-local agreement between the cities of Abilene, Midland, and San Angelo effective April 9 to 11, West Texas Water Partnership for the quarterly invoice dated September 17 to 13 and October 29 to 13. Ms. Burrell, you're on.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Speaking of the West Texas Water Partnership, we received two invoices, one for August and one for September, since we last discussed this on September 17. At that time, council ratified about $262,000 worth of expenditures to the West Texas Water Partnership, namely the city of Abilene. Since then, we have received two invoices, one for August in the amount of about $6,000, and one in September for about $23,000, for a total of about $29,000 that would be due at this time, in addition to what has already been ratified. So we're seeking authorization to pay those invoices.
Are there going to be any more of these, Michael?
Yes, sir. On a regular basis, there, we're going to be billed for our share, one-third of the expenses of the partnership. And your finance directors before you today seeking authority based on the direction given by council a few meetings back. And we'll continue to do it this way until council directs otherwise.
So this is not in addition to what we authorized two meetings ago, but this is a new bill?
Yeah.
There are two, two new, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There are two, two new invoices, the one for August and the one for September. So we initially ratified $262,000. Right now, we're at a total of $292,000 for an additional $29,000.
Is this still in phase one?
This is a little of both. Mayor, when we talked before, we had, we knew the June and July numbers. And so if you take the 247 at the top of her screen, add the 8900 and the 5700, I think you get up to the 200 and...
62.
62 that we had discussed before. But we had not cut checks for the 8900 or the 5700. But you did give approval to pay up to that 262 amount. What she says is we've got two more invoices, the 6,000 and the 23,000. And so we're, while we've got approval for those first two lines, we need approval for those next two lines. We're going to cut them a check for 44,000 and change. We just need approval on, for the 6,000 and the 23,000 in order to do that.
And this is still under that contract that, that the previous mayor signed as one-third of the coalition, Abilene, Midland, and San Angelo, where we said under contract that we would pay our third, this is...
This is one-third, yes, sir.
And this is the end of it? No mas?
No, sir. That, that inter-local agreement continues as long as we continue to meet and have those meetings. For example, we've got a quarterly meeting coming up here in a, in a couple of months. There will be, there'll be expenses associated with that, and we'll continue to pay one-third. And so as legal fees accrue associated with that partnership, we'll, we'll pay a third of those. And as, as the engineers do work and provide billings for those, we'll, we'll have to pay one-third of those also.
Counsel?
One thing I have a question on is the invoice that we have for the $23,392.13. It says, West Texas Water Partnership, September. That's it. That's all it says.
Right. We, we can't... Go ahead.
The detail is still based on the opinion of the city attorney, subject to executive session.
We need to have those in executive session. Can we do that?
Yes.
Because I'd like to, I'd like to know for the residents in the city to, to know that at least someone's looking after. I know Winkie would want that also. Somebody's looking after the amount of money that we're spending, when somebody just hands me a bill and it says it's $24,000 and it's, and, and there's no breakdown whatsoever, we need to be looking at something.
You are absolutely right.
I agree.
We'd be glad to do that.
It's, it's our practice to try to redact any work product, attorney-client privileged information on an invoice. So we could do so and then present in open session, if you wish. But the concern would just be, I will speak with Mr. Rochelle and determine what might need to be redacted.
Okay. Right. I'm fine with that. I think we're, we'd all be fine with that, as long as seven of us are looking at the bills that are coming in, and we're, you know...
This is, this is very, very secure. This is very sensitive information that we're dealing with, and we, we don't want everybody in the world to know what we're doing. And I understand what you're saying, and I agree, it should be done in executive, but...
I move we table this.
I think we should. I'll, I'll second that. So at least we know what's going on, but we're going to have to keep this in executive.
But you're saying, you're saying we're going to get to see it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. As long as that, I just want to see it.
We'll bring it to the next meeting.
But it needs to stay in executive.
Well, I understand.
It doesn't need to be in the standard times.
Maybe somebody else needs to tell that to...
We've had a motion, we've had a second, and let's table this until next meeting, and we'll have a, have an accounting. Does he further comment on that?
Are they going to cut our account off? We're going credit?
I don't believe so.
We're behind by 29,000.
We've already approved phase two.
We're going to get our dump trucks repossessed?
We're behind by, by 44,000.
Oh, 44, sorry.
Any public comment?
They're going to cancel our membership.
I have a comment.
Start hiding vehicles.
We're all in agreement on all this, but please do not send, do not ask us to approve bills when we don't even know what they are, okay? That's contrary to what the council intends. And Mr. Fleming said that clearly. And we had this agreement a while back, and so...
But then, but then, on the other hand, when we look at these as a council and executive, these figures and this secure information must stay in executive and not be sent out on a memorandum, memorandum to the entire world. So I think just as long as we understand that. I understand us getting the information, but it needs to stay with us, and that has not been the case in the past.
If it has to be released, and you said this before, we'll release it as a body, as a body, not as an individual.
And that's the way it's going to have to be, because if this, if a memorandum comes out again that we, as a council, has said, we don't want this to come out, and we have one member that sends it out instead, then that is not going, it's going to destroy things. So there has to be an understanding, if we're going to do this as an executive, we're going to have to keep this in executive. And I'm preaching to the choir here, because we did keep it in executive, but...
Well, for our partners, we're going to pay the bill up there. I'm sure this, I'm sure everything is on the up and up.
From now on, we can just put it on executive first before we...
But when we see one bill that just has that, you know, it's...
No, I understand.
And Tina will, Tina won't tell the whole wide world what the breakdown of that $23,000 is.
I'm not telling anyone.
We've had a motion, we've had a second, that we table this until we get more information. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six O on that one.
Mayor, we appreciate the direction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see, number 21 is consideration of adopting a resolution in preparation for staff to provide for budget goals and policies that include the following options for terminating the wastewater payment in lieu of taxes transfer. Ms. Morgan?
Good afternoon. What I have here before you is a resolution speaking to an item that was discussed late during the budget preparation process, that we do away with the $500,000 wastewater pilot that is transferred from the wastewater utility fund to the general operating fund. So just a brief explanation here, that the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes is when general fund receives a transfer from a nonprofit.
We had this presentation, Megan, before. Can we just get to the proposals?
Sure thing, absolutely.
Pick one up. We've got to leave it for, Duane's got to leave it for.
Judge Diddy comes on at four.
There are a couple of options open to you in that resolution. The first one before you is an example that we could reduce the wastewater fund transfer by $100,000 every year for five years. This is, as discussed before, to mitigate the impact to the general fund so that we can absorb that over time and not take one hit in a very short amount of time. And so that plan is there before you to be done in fiscal year 19 at $0 being transferred for this purpose. Another option before you in that resolution is to reduce the wastewater transfer by half, so to, so to stay in the current fiscal year at $500,000, to reduce it by $250,000 next fiscal year, and then to propose the budget for fiscal year 16 at $0. So those are the, the options that staff has put together for you as, as requested.
What would, Daniel, what, what would city, is your recommendation?
My recommendation, to be honest with you, I guess we're going to be doing everything we can to possibly reduce expenditures as much as possible this coming fiscal year. This would work, but I mean, me, I would prefer to go 100,000 on a, on a year-by-year basis, this one right here. Again, we'll shoot for as much as we possibly can, and we'll be doing a lot of reductions this coming year. But just to be, be very conservative, this is the one that I like.
Counsel, we had a discussion?
Yeah, I, I like the second proposal, but in compromise, in the spirit of compromise and getting out of here, I, I wouldn't have any problem with doing $100,000 this year and getting rid of the other $400,000 next year. I'm assuming with all the construction going on, we'll have additional revenue next year, and that would be a good place to, to get, knock it in the head once and for all. I don't think we ought to stair-step this over four, five years.
About 100, 200, 200?
Three years.
I could accept that. Would that work, Winkie? 100, 200, 200, do it over three years?
Oh, I guess.
All right.
About 250, 250?
My, my deal is, let's do it 100 this year, then let's look at the budget next year, and if we can knock it 250, let's do it.
That's a good idea.
How, how long have we been doing this?
Forever, I guess.
More than 10 years.
Longer than that. It started back in the 90s.
That's crazy. Okay. I, I make a motion that we cut it $100,000 this year and look at the budget the next go-round.
I like that, I'll second it.
And I'm sorry, I'll, I'm...
There is no...
I'll need clarification. When you say this year, do you mean fiscal year 14, the year we're in right now? Because there will need to be corresponding expense reductions immediately in the general fund, which is not what's before you from staff.
Right, 14.
In 14.
Yes.
So are we adopting a resolution? Is that the way, are we even voting on this?
Yeah, we're adopting a resolution. He just made the...
I just resolved.
He just moved, and I just seconded.
You just resolved it?
I just resolved it.
My goodness. I'm impressed.
Any other counsel comments? Do we have anyone from the public which is to comment on this? Come on, Turner. Just like trying to slip a sunrise by a rooster, isn't it?
Yes, but I'm still Jim Turner. And we don't have time to go into some of the history errors that were presented earlier on this, but we do have to be careful when we're presenting stuff like this to the council. We do get the history right. But part of the history, when we eliminate the Water Pilot Fund, which was a true pilot that was based on property tax calculations, et cetera, even though it was not a good transfer, at least they got the name right and the procedure right. That was done over three years, and it took almost three years to negotiate it away. So that was a very contentious process. We finally have got a council that has the same philosophy, same direction, and it's going to go much smoother. I think as part of the resolution, you do need to put a term limit on it of three years that you will have it done with, so that next year, you still have that timeline in front of you. In three years, we're going to be done with this pilot. However you divide it up, based on the budget considerations, that's mechanics. The goal needs to be it's eliminated in three years. Thank you.
Any other public comment? You got your orders, boss?
Got them.
Been a motion that we do 100,000 in FY14, and then next year, it comes back to us, the remainder of 400, 400,000, to determine how we're going to get rid of it. And I like Daniel's 100, 200, 200, but...
That's a goal.
We'll deal with it next year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six O on that one, please, ma'am. First, number 22. First budget hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the 213-214 budget for a contract change order, an ordinance of the city of San Angelo amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 213, and ending September 30, 214, for a contract change order. Ms. Morgan?
It's necessary at this time to amend the budget ordinance for a new project, a change in the scope of the airport terminal project. It's necessary to increase revenue for that project of $14,643 from the passenger facility charges, which are ineligible use of this fee for the construction contract on airport terminal project, specifically for electrical work needed to install equipment for the Transportation, Transportation Security Administration. So, it'll be a $14,643 expense out of the passenger facility charge fund. And then that expense for, to Templeton, for the expense of installing electrical equipment for this to be installed.
This is going to be a per-ticket price? This will be added to the price of a ticket?
It's already been collected and is in the fund balance for passenger facility charge, the current per-ticket price that is paid already.
Council, any consideration? Anybody want to, anybody want to move that we approve this?
I'll move for approval of this item.
Somebody want to second?
I'll second.
Any public comment? It has been moved that we accept this as presented. It has been seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
I abstain.
You abstain? That would be a 5-0 vote for approval.
That must be a large, large master control panel that we're relocating.
Yeah. Lou tells me there's some super-duper piece of equipment TSA is getting, and this electrical work is necessary to put it in use.
Super-duper?
Super-duper. That's a, that's a technical term.
As was said at the last meeting, this is an awful lot of money you're spending. Anyhow, it's been approved. First public hearing, number 23, in consideration of introducing an ordinance, increasing the number of members on the public housing authority from five to seven and other related provisions, and ordinance submitting chapter two entitled Administration, Article 2, 2700, entitled Housing Authority, Section 2.2701, entitled Created Members Terms of the Code of Ordinance of the City of San Angelo by increasing the number of members on the housing authority from five to seven, providing that two members be tenants of public housing and providing for severability and effective date. Ms. Ramirez?
As you read in the caption, the public housing authority voted to increase their numbers from five to seven, and this merely just updates the ordinance to show the membership has been increased.
I've attended several of these meetings, and they, this, this is a very well-organized. Tony Villarreal is the chairman of this. It's, I, I like, I like the way they do business, so I don't have a problem. They want seven. Anybody want them?
My problem is, we've got too many committees, too many boards, too many, too much, and now we're making one bigger. Why?
Why?
Yeah.
This vote was taken back in April. I'm not sure why they changed their membership composition.
If, if they want to change their composition, I have no problem with that. I have a problem with them adding two.
With the what?
With them adding two.
Are they adding the two tenants? Are the two tenants already on there?
No, before it was only one tenant. When you increase the number from five to seven, you have to have two tenants.
So, you're adding a tenant and another member?
Yes, sir.
Keep it even. Odd.
Odd, see. Tiebreaker.
What you want to do, brother barman?
I don't want to do it.
You want to remand it back to them and tell them to look at it again?
I will, I will move to approve this addition of two members to this PHA board for the sake of discussion.
If I get a second, we'll vote. If I don't get a second, then we'll look for another motion to remand it back to them to redo it.
What?
Got a second?
Was this done in order to get a forum, or are they having a problem getting?
That may be the problem, Rodney. That may be the problem.
I sure would like to hear from them before I vote on this, because I could see Don's point of view on this. I wish that that, that board was here in front of us and can tell us why they asked for two more spots.
There, there may be some good reason that I'm.
The only thing, I mean, I have their minutes, and it just shows the vote. It doesn't give the reason why.
No, I'd like to have them here telling us what. And Tony, and I trust Tony on, on those things. He, he usually knows best, but I think he could make it a lot easier for us if he explained it to us.
Okay.
Do I pull my move or do I pull my motion?
You pull your motion. Motion.
I'll pull my motion.
Bust a move.
A second. Okay.
Then let's remand this back to public housing and tell them we want to know why before we do it.
Okay, we'll do it.
We want Tony here.
To tell us why he wants.
Not that we're against it.
Yeah.
I'd just like for him to tell us why.
That would be a stow-in, wouldn't it? Alrighty, let's move on. Number 24, consideration and possible action on matters discussed in executive closed session if needed.
There's really no, I mean, I got consent.
We did talk about, we talked about some land. We talked about a couple of hires from emergency operations. We talked about a hire from, for the Coast of DC director. Now, we need to carry it further, the next step, to see if they want to be hired. But we did consent to the applicants, and now we need to send it to them to see if they want to consent to us. That's it?
That's it.
So, there is really no action need to be taken. It is matter of, it's bookkeeping now to be sure that it'll happen. Okay, let's go to number 25, consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. A, tax increment reinvestment zone, Dominic Santos, SMD 3, to a full turn October 215. Does anyone want to move that we accept Dominic Santos? That'd be in your area, Johnny?
Yes, sir.
I move we accept.
I'll second that.
We do have a motion and a second. Do I have any further council consideration? Do I have any public comment on this? And the motion has been made that Dominic Santos be, be included, tax increment reinvestment zone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six oh. Consideration, number 26, and nomination for council member Marty Self, single-member district two, to serve as an ex officio member on the Howard County San Angelo Foundation Board.
College.
College.
What I say?
County.
County. Howard County.
The Howard College, San Angelo Foundation Board.
Maybe that's why you did such a good job on that.
Remove the county from there. It is late in.
I will bust a move to.
Just about all. Does anyone want to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a move.
Okay.
I'll move.
We have a move and a second. Is there any further consideration from council? Do I have any consideration from the public? If not, all in favor of appointing Marty, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Announcements, number 27, in consideration of future agenda items. What do we have? Mr. Wardlaw?
I'll wait till later on in the week, first part of next week on mine, so we can get you out of here.
I would, and have been asking, and I'm not sure this is, I'll leave this call up to Michael. I've been wanting to look at our, our stormwater fees, what we're spending those on, a breakdown and discussion with the council on those, and also a look at our half-cent sales tax and, and how much is going where, and, and if the, the council would like to take a look at those and maybe redirect some of those monies.